And begin the meeting and the meeting to order, enroll call please. Councilmember Maurer.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Present.
Mayor Breeden.
Here.
Vice Mayor Acton.
Here.
Councilmember Sanders is running late. Okay, just so you know that you all had asked if somebody wasn't going to be here that I announced why, Mike is here on the phone and Councilman Sanders is running a little late. So, approval of the agenda? Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Maurer.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Breeden.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Acton.
Aye.
And four prove, one absent. All right, please stand for the pledge and Mr. Whitnick, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
For allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And please remain standing.
Shall we pray? Father, we're here today gathering as a community, as a whole with love and unity. Father, we thank you for the individuals that make up this community. We thank you for those that respond. Very first, we thank you for those that are here tonight. We thank you for our world that is hurting, Father God. Grant us love and unity and give us the ability to run towards you for answers and guidance. Give us the assurance in our heart that you are there and that you will answer our prayers. This we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please be seated. Thank you. Okay, the city attorneys report.
Madam Mayor, there was no closed session today and nothing else to report.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? Persons wishing to address the council on items that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. The public comment section of the agenda is limited to a total of one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name. Please.
Good evening. I'm Mike Cash and I wanted to address a few things to the council and to Stan and Dave. Thank you for being here. First of all, I want to thank everyone that was involved in the All Lives Blue Lives Matter at Freedom Park last week. I appreciate what was said, what was shared, and I'm in full support. The comments about "we are us" was amazing and I appreciate that. Our employees of the police department and staff live in this community, raise their families in this community, and volunteer in this community. So I thought it was very appropriate. The whole agenda for that day was just amazing. The time of prayer, time of coming together, and Mayor, I want to thank you for leading out on that.
It was a team effort. Thank you.
The other subject I wanted to talk about today is the follow-on to Measure L. And I want to make it very clear that I'm in full support.
It's on the agenda tonight.
Yes.
Okay, well, we generally, sir, do that when we're talking about an item on the agenda at the time we bring up the item.
All right. Well, the third item I'd like to talk about.
Okay, thank you. But please feel free to speak then. Thank you.
Assemblywoman Shannon Grove called me this afternoon and wanted to share with me some of the items, things that were going on over there in our support, our community support of the fire victims in the South Lake Isabella area. And we talked quite a while and she, I told her I was coming to the meeting today. She really appreciated and wanted me to share that, everyone's support in this community for supporting our friends and family that live in that area. And she's just amazed and very blessed, as am I. And I just want to go on record in saying thank you to this community for the continued support. As you know, it's going to be years of required support over there to get these families back again and whole again. And it's been an honor specifically for myself and our foundation in supporting our veterans. We have 21 veterans that were burned out and we're going to, we continue to monitor that on a daily basis and looking for ways that we can continue to support our family and friends in the Kern River Valley. So I just wanted to thank you for your support.
Thank you. That was another big community effort. Let me share with you a couple of things that have happened that goes along with what you're doing. I won't take long stand. Go on up. It's okay. We collected $35,000, sent it over. There's another $5,000 in the bank right now, ready to go. I asked the Exchange Club, the Rotary Club, the Kernville Chamber of Commerce, the Kern Valley Chamber of Commerce, and All Faith Church, who is the organization that's working with all of the money and the donations. And they said, please don't send anything more right now. We do have, as I say, another additional $5,000. I do know another $10,000 went over there from another source. And they're going to need more when the time comes for like, as they build their homes and develop it. So we have, we have a path in front of us and I'm very proud of all the community who did that. It was a great job. And it wasn't just any one person. It was the whole blessed community. We're very lucky to be able to do that. And time may come around. We may need somebody to reciprocate for us. So we're proud. So thank you. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Stan.
Good evening. My name is Stan Ritora. I just have two topics tonight. The first one hopefully is short. I've been trying to get some financial data from the city for, it seems forever, but I think it's probably only been a month or two. I've sent requests in, and at this point in time, I guess I'm looking for help as to what do I actually do to get the information that I've requested.
I do know I forwarded your request when you sent it to me to Mr. Spear. Did you have?
Yes, and I'll forward that on to the finance director who's been on vacation the last two weeks. I'll forward that to him on Monday.
Sorry, sir.
Okay.
That's where, that's your answer.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you. Second topic deals with the last council meeting. We actually raised the wastewater fund fees for the fourth time in four years. There were some comments made from the folks up there on the dice that I questioned the validity of. So I went home and did some fact checking of some of the comments that I heard. And I have three that I want to relate. The first comment was that the rate increases were due to not having a rate increase in many years. And I was pretty sure, I'm not going to say who said that because I'm not sure I remember, but in any event, I'm pretty sure that wasn't right. It turns out if you go into the city's financial reports for the year that we actually got the first rate increase, the amount of money in the wastewater fund was $9.3 million. That was just pure cash. In addition to that, that has nothing to do with Mike here, there was also a loan to the city for $6.8 million that is yet to be returned from money that was borrowed, and I use that term loosely, from the wastewater fund. So if it hadn't been for the city borrowing money, there would have been, when we had our first rate increase, $16.1 million in the wastewater fund. So I think it's pretty hard to say that the reason we had a rate increase was because we hadn't had a rate increase for a number of years. It's true, we didn't have a rate increase for many years. I don't think we really needed it based upon having or should have had $16.1 million. Second thing that I heard was that 100% financing is not available. Fact checking that, I discovered that in the 2013 rate study, that study assumed that there was going to be 100% of money for bonding when the time came. That rate study was endorsed by the staff and it was approved by the council. So I don't think we can say that 100% financing is not available. In addition to that, back in January of this year, there was a presentation by our wastewater consultant who gave us a brief. And he was very clear in that brief that there is 100% financing available at 2.26%, which is, if you understand, if you ever tried to finance a house, that is really, really good financing. And it turns out for the tertiary plant, there's 1% available. Okay, the third comment that I heard that I thought was erroneous was that the rate increase was justified because our neighbors pay more. Now, it's probably true that our neighbors pay more than we do. Frankly, in my mind, that's irrelevant. They pay whatever their rate study tells them they should be paying, and we should be paying whatever our rate study tells us to be paying. Unfortunately, our rate study used incorrect information at the very start and at this point in time is totally flawed. So to make a long story short, which of course is impossible to do at this point in time, I am requesting that the council initiate a new rate study so that we don't have continued increases in the sewer fee without understanding why we're doing it. Any questions?
Stan, I forwarded some of your questions to Dennis and he said he was going to get the answers for as many as he could from the consultant. Now, you didn't say anything about a new rate study.
No.
So at that time.
In that, in that paper, those were comments specifically to the wastewater treatment plant, some of them being technical, some, and many of them being policy driven. Okay? So you're right. I did not. This is the first time I have specifically asked for a new rate study. If, had I been thinking about it, I would have asked for it six months ago before we had the latest increase. Unfortunately, that's just poor planning on my part. We need a new rate study so that we really know what our fees should be. Thank you.
Good evening, counsel. Mike Neal. First, let me start off our heartily seconding Mr. Ritora's suggestion and request. I've been right here since day one on the wastewater rate increases, opposed it along with him and former council member Jerry Taylor. It all went right on, right on through. Just so happens, he's not the only one having trouble getting information from the city. I referred to a public records request that I made on April 25th where I requested records of any letters, emails, notes, documents, phone con records. Two are from the city staff between Nigel White, the Bureau of Indian Affairs, or the Timbasa Shoshone Tribe. Waited well past the 10-day time period and got no response. So on May 26th, I emailed again and said, I've been waiting. Where's my information? Got zero response. I believe I had a phone conversation and was told actually, to my total surprise, prior to May 26th, there were no records of the kind I was asking for. So I'm sitting there wondering, why, how in the heavens' name did we form an MSA agreement and had no written communication with these entities? So the council got my email along with the city attorney's office on June 14th whereby I repeated the comment, the content of the first request, and noted that I'd still been waiting well past 10 days and had said previously, you know, I would accept some partial information, having gotten zero. And I was told by the city attorney, he replied back briefly and said, I'll look into it. So since that time, I still have absolutely nothing. I've been told another citizen has asked, like, a very similar request and been told, and this might be the wrong number, claimed that there were something like 30,000 emails that had to be poured through to fulfill this request. Now, if you think about it, I don't think that's even possible, even with all the staff members in this city.
That is completely accurate.
Pardon?
That is absolutely accurate. There are over 30,000 emails that staff has to go through to be able to provide you an answer to your request. First, we have to sort through them to see if they actually pertain to your request because they do have the key words of what you're requesting. Then, once we narrow it down to 5, 6, 7,000 emails, then we have to determine the ones that need to be sent to the city attorney's office for comment. We already know that that's approximately 1,000, I think, that the city attorney then is going to have to respond to. So we're, it's not that we're not working on your request. It's just that we just don't have 10 people to devote to looking through 30,000 emails to narrow this down at this time.
Boy, that's a lot of emails in six months' time, even between four staff members. But I'll take your word for it, Dennis. You know, I did ask for partial information. So, you know, something's better than nothing. I got nothing so far. So I'm repeating this request and basically saying, you know, why can't I get something, something at all? Seems like maybe they're just taking their sweet time. So just to provide to council just so you know, I have found an attorney in Los Angeles who does like to work on Public Records Act and Brown Act cases. You know, if I'm not seeing something by August, I would think it's totally unreasonable to have to wait this long, get absolutely nothing. And I may have to go see him. I just is, you know, I was hoping to have some background information about the MSA, about what went on in the city and, you know, communications and so forth that were going. And so now we're way, way, way past that. So, you know, this is nothing but historical, pretty much, I guess, at this point, other than possibly some background information to educate me about the upcoming land sale agreement that's forthcoming. So, you know, but it's just not right for a citizen to have to wait 90 days for a Public Records Act request and get absolutely nothing.
Can I, can I ask you a question, Mr. Neal, first? As a point of order, I guess, is what I'm asking. Can we respond to them, tell them we're going through what the process we're going through?
He has been responded to, both in writing and verbally.
Okay, you said you got nothing.
The writing was from the city attorney who said, I'll look into it. That's what I got.
You also received an email from our city court?
Did not.
And I spoke to you personally after the last council meeting.
Yeah, you told me, you told me there were 15,000 emails.
At the time, that's what, that's what it was, 15,000.
Okay, well, I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about getting a response that says, well, we can't provide information. I'm talking about a response with some information
Mr. Neal.
Over this period of time.
Mrs. Ford has a comment.
If I may, I have been going through the 30,000 emails. I am currently down to 1,077 emails left. I hope to get through those by tomorrow. At that time, I will send them to the attorneys who will then go through and make sure that none of them meet the confidential negotiation criteria.
It would be good to see something. I would appreciate it.
I appreciate.
Go ahead. I just want to ask a question. When, I've been told on other boards that I sat on, when someone, and this is not a point of order, I'm not criticizing, I just want to know what we can do. When someone threatens a lawsuit, it is our job to stand back, not discuss it anymore, and it is between the attorneys or legal. Is that, is that, have I been told incorrectly?
No, I think that's good, good practice. But I think giving some information by, by staff to Mr. Neal makes sense, especially since we're making progress here. But I think as the council members probably should not communicate directly.
Mike, we don't want to put you off. That is not our goal. I would like to be, continue to be able to respond to you as I can and as I see fit and appropriate. But I don't want to be threatened. I don't want the city to be threatened with a lawsuit. And I, in my trying to be honest with you, say something inadvertently. And I, in my trying to be honest with you, say something inadvertently that will come back and hit either myself or the city over the head. So if we don't respond anymore, don't threaten us, please.
Oh, I'm not threatening, I'm making point of fact. I'm telling you, if I don't see some information by mid-August, then I'll be getting, trying to get a lawyer to come and see you about it. You know, I had to do this years ago over the theft of the wastewater fund, got stonewalled, got all kinds of stuff told to me about this, excuses for it.
That was in the past.
And get a lawyer, and that was taken care of. But the only reason it was taken care of was because I found a lawyer who was willing to take it on and come at the city about it. Otherwise, I don't, have no confidence that it would ever have been taken care of. So I'm just saying, I don't think it's reasonable, and, you know, when you get past reasonable, you have to do something, or you just have to say, oh, well, I guess I won't ask for any more records anymore because if they don't want to give it, they just don't give it.
That's the only alternative.
Exactly.
Thank you.
I want to say one thing. I sincerely do appreciate the Freedom of Information Act. I sincerely do appreciate the Freedom of Information Act. I think it's one of the best laws that have been made because it opens the door for transparency in government and makes sure that, yeah.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, that's what.
Now I can really hear you.
I really think it's a good law. However, it, just like any good thing, it can be abused. And I want you to understand, I want the public to understand, this is putting a tremendous burden on our skeleton staff, a burden that is also costing a lot of money that nobody has to pay in this room except for all of us together. Now, that's fine, we're going to do it, and we should do it.
Yep.
And you will get the information you, you request for, and that's fine. But you need to understand the burden that that is also placing on us, and I appreciate your patience in letting us deal with that burden. Thank you.
Well, I would have had more patience had I got a little bit better, like, okay, we're working on it, we've got a lot to dig through, whatever, you know, periodic, something like that, just, you know, a few updates here and there, would have worked a little better, I think.
Maybe, maybe next time if we just send you a written letter to say, because obviously you didn't get Rachel's email and you didn't, weren't able to hear Dennis's conversation with you saying that you were, we were working on it.
Well, I don't, I remember what Dennis said, you know, that was a while back. So, you know, what am I supposed to think? You don't want to hear nothing.
All right, well, thank you, sir.
Tom Wicknick, address on file. I don't know anything about the email thing, but I just can't think about Hillary Clinton's emails right now.
Well, thank God it wasn't 300,000.
I'm sorry, I just couldn't pass it up. I understand we've got the city manager and city attorney in the dark overhead with lights again. Could we get that taken care of? Now the real question why I'm up here. Thank you for trying. Now the real question why I'm up. Do we have a time schedule on when we'll be selecting the sewer site for the sewer plant? I just wondered if we have anything there.
Yes, and the answer is, is we have to wait until we can get back into discussions with the Navy. Reason I say that is I have set a, received a, their version of a grant of easement for the new site, and apparently San Diego is in a complete disconnect from the discussions we've had with the base. And I'm kind of blindsiding the council, they haven't even heard this. But I, so I went ahead and forwarded the grant of easement both to our city attorney, and also to our bond counsel, who originally brought up the concern that if there is language that doesn't really provide a real property interest, then we would not be able to, most funding agencies would not allow us to build on that site. Well, that's exactly what we got from San Diego. We got what we had discussed with the base in terms of what we could not or did not want to see in that agreement. So that just came to me last, last week or something like that. The lady asked for me to call her back. I had already forwarded the agreement to our two attorneys, bond counsel and our city attorney. And I've called her, and so far we're playing phone tag. But the point is, is we need to, I need to let her know because she drafted it, and then I need to, we need to get back with the base, and we may even have to get the congressman involved because if we thought we had a bad agreement the first time, because we're, right now, we have an operations agreement that calls for easements in which we will be able to operate. Well, they tried to bypass an operations agreement, put contractual language in the, in the grant of easement itself, it's very cullible document, it doesn't meet our needs. And before, I intend to, once we get opinions from both of our attorneys, take this first infrastructure, just to announce it and let them know what the status is. Because where we were at following the certification of the EIR, the next step was for the, to make sure that everything was cleared with the base so that our consultant could, could prepare the final draft of the project report, which would include his recommendation for the Navy site, because that was his originally preferred site, and bring it back to council. With, when he, when he does that, the council would then either agree and say, yes, we agree with your recommended site, or the alternative site. And then with the, with the selection of the site, we could approach the funding agencies, number one, and number two, at that point in time, we could, we could send out, we could advertise, send out an RFP for a firm, for the firm that would be doing the PS and E. But until we get this issue with the grant of easement, which became a grant of easement agreement, I'll call it, until we can resolve that, we can't move on to the next step.
So it's probably going to be a while, it sounds like, unless things were to just go along real quickly. I guess?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The bottom line is, I can't really give, I'm telling you the situation, the circumstances, I can't really give you the time.
Appreciate that.
Kay, is, okay, Mr. Porter.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Paul Porter. I come up today to speak about something that we seem to have forgotten in this nation, and because you are all representatives of the people and the overseers of the agents for our city, and it's due process. While people sit back and they acquiesce to, well, the court said, or, well, the attorney said, well, this, that's not, that, your job is to look at it and look at the Constitution and say, do we have this? Do we have due process? The reason we set up due process in this country is to stop the overreach of government, to give people a protection against government. We don't have a democracy, we have a republic. And the reason it's a republic is because the primary interest of every representative body and every representative is to protect the individual. We don't have anything other than that. George Washington called democracy mobocracy. It's not, it's not what the mob wants. I'm certainly, there's no one sitting up there on city council that says, okay, all men have to wear blue and all women have to wear pink every day. I doubt seriously any of you would agree to that. That's mobocracy. We have due process. In fact, the Constitution lists due process, anything over $20, just, you have a jury. The jury is the safety valve for the people. And we just went through, we took a man's home, we did all this, and we got rid of that safety valve. We didn't make sure. You guys are the overseers, you have to say, this is how I'd want to be treated. This is how, I want a jury there. I want someone to control my government. And right now, we don't have that. We have courts that are acquiescing. You hear it on the news every day, the US Supreme Court, this is the law of the land. Well, first off, the US Supreme Court doesn't have that authority. The overseers of the Constitution are the people and the states. That's the reason you take an oath of office in the Constitution. Your have, your job is to actually look at the Constitution, say, this is how we do it, and this is why. If you can't find that, then you need to go somewhere else and say, no, we're not doing it. They intended the small governments, the cities, the counties, the states, to say, this is where we're going. I'm standing up here, and am I preaching at you? No, I'm trying to educate because yours is as much dangerous as anyone else. We all need to say, we need to protect the individual's rights. It's just like they had something talking about these, the new Blue Agendas. Do we want a government that tells us what we can eat? Freedom means as long as I don't, oh, they're trying right now. Freedom means as long as my, my exercise doesn't interfere with your freedom, then it should be mine. It's my liberty, the same as yours. They shouldn't tell you what color to paint your house. We need to say, sit back and say, we need to bring this back to the liberty and freedom this nation was founded to be. And that takes everyone, especially our leaders. We can't continue down this road where the government continually thinks that they can take more and more of the people's rights away. A prime example, you hear it all the time, a driver's license. A driver's license is a privilege. No, it's not. A driver's license is a right. Now, we as a society have to set certain restrictions on it to protect other people's rights, which means that if you pass this test, if you do this, if you're sure you're qualified to drive, you have a right to that. Would be no different for a pilot license. If you meet all these requirements, you have a right to that. We need to start getting back on that track. We're not mobs. We need to stand up and say, my job is to protect that individual. That's all of our jobs. It's just like freedom of speech. We see freedom of speech being attacked every day. We need to stop the attacks on freedom of speech. Everyone here in this room should be willing to fight to the death to protect someone's right to disagree with them vehemently. And until we get back to that point, we have a serious problem. I have just a few seconds left, and I want to talk about the emails that they talked about here. I've done a lot with Freedom of Information Act. In the state of California, it's known as the Public Records Act. And the simple way, you don't have to go search them all, and there are search tools to do that. But you also have another secondary factor, you just send to the persons that we're working on, says, give me all your notes and stuff off of it. And that includes stickies. I've done business doing that. You'll go ask them. Then they said, well, we have to make sure this wasn't part of negotiations. I'll finish up very quickly. If the person that received that wasn't one of the negotiators, that doesn't fall under the law either, especially before an action was even taken. Those are public records, and the people deserve a right to know. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment?
Am I on here? Yeah. I wasn't going to say anything, but Mr. Porter mentioned something that I would like to, well, first of all, I'd like to second his, his comments there. The other is, he mentioned due process. And it's apparent to me, and has been for a number of years, that, and, and nobody really is harping on this among the political candidates and so forth. But due process is broken in this country. You just, if you want something to do, you don't have anything to do for a while, go down to one of the court proceedings and see what takes place. And cases that are sometimes drawn out for even years should not have taken that long. I know, I've, I've sat in on a couple, I'm still monitoring a couple. But that also is something that needs to be corrected, both here, especially here in California, I think. Years ago, they changed the court setup. I think that was a mistake. We used to have municipal courts. The USO Historic Building down here, I think started out as one of those. And that took care of all the petty stuff and misdemeanors and whatnot, and the traffic citations. Now, the court system is so loaded down and so filled with lawyers that just want to get paid or beat the system or something like that, and that it bogs down for years. And that is not due process. Now, I'd just like to add one other personal thing. Mike Kay, I am jealous. Shannon Grove never calls me, so the next time you talk to her, tell her I'm on a phone call.
Thank you, sir. Is there any others?
Marilyn Neal. Good evening. Thank you for hearing us again tonight. And I just wanted to, again, I'm an echo voice, and I believe what Mr. Porter, you know, Mr. Matthews has had to say is not just redundant, I think it's very, very valuable.
Marilyn, can you speak up just a little bit more? Put it closer to you. Thank you.
Sure. It's very valuable. Please listen, please take note. I didn't come up here with anything real heavy tonight, except that I would like to mention that I believe it is very, very critical that those sitting in public offices need to understand what the role of government is. And I've spoken about that before, many others have, and I believe that the two things that we, most, many of us agree on is that the role of government is infrastructure and public defense. Well, it may not seem like a big thing of infrastructure, but I think that if this council really, really wants public input, really wants transparency, really wants involvement, a little thing that might fall under infrastructure is taking care of having a water fountain at the public meeting place. And if not a water, working water fountain, perhaps the city can take some of the money that it's distributing around here yonder and everywhere to things that perhaps are not the role of government, and buy bottled water. It really is, was, was, as you all know, quite inconvenient for the people who were here during the casino discussions, all of that, and it got very hot. The cooling system, I don't know what was going on with that at that time. Those things to me, that if, if you really want, sincerely want the involvement of city, and I'm not saying that people aren't here just because there's not water here tonight, they can bring water, of course, but it seems to be kind of a basic necessity and would be very helpful to the citizens if you can take care of the water fountain or availability of water. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay, then we will go on to council announcements. Does anybody have council announcements? Eddie, do you have any? Councilman Thomas?
Madam Mayor, if it's possible, I would like to reserve mine until my comments in reference to our event that we had on, on Saturday. That's okay with me.
Certainly. Either one of you?
Nope.
I'd like to share with you something that happened over the weekend to me, and I had talked to Mr. Spear about it. Wade McKinney is the city manager at Indian Wells, and he's a personal friend of mine. He's also the president of the California League of City Managers. And we were just talking about... And we were just talking about cities in general and where we are. And he said, well, have you set goals? And I said, you know, gee, I don't think so. If we did, I had to have been asleep or something, because I don't remember that. And he said that his city, just before election time, goes over the goals to see that they have, that they have set over the years, and I sent a copy to Mr. Spear, and we'll do the same to council. And, and the reason they do it before election time, because it's generally a little bit slower for them. I don't know when it is a, it's not a slow time for us, but with such short staff, I don't imagine we're anybody sitting around wondering what they're going to do tomorrow. But I do believe that it is something, and so when I sent to Mr. Spear and I asked him, have we ever done that? And he said that a previous council had done that. And I'd like to see that come back to us to look at. Had I been wise enough and smart enough to go see, I guess they weren't approved at that time, I think I would have been smarter when I came on, and I would have known where you all were going. And it's not like you set the goals and say, here they are written in stone, and this is what we're going to do, and it will, nothing will ever change. But it would give new people, and since there's going to be three openings this year, there may be three new council members. And if there are, then I think they would benefit as I think I could have benefited. And I would like us to have those out again and look at them and see if they're appropriate, and not so when either the city council is retained or new people come in, that everybody can look at those goals and say, they may be of value to me to see what my previous council thought. So it would be a previous, previous council. But I would like to learn from those. And if we can set up a time and again, I know nobody has absolutely anything to do all summer, but to look at it and see if there's, if they are of value to see how they are. Mr. Spear had told us that a few years ago that you'd had long, long meetings about them. Well, I don't know if we need long, long meetings about them again to reestablish them, but let's just look at it and see where we are. I'd like to have learned, I wish I'd had the opportunity, and I wish I was wise enough and smart enough to say, well, what did you all think? How did you? And I would have liked to do that. So I asked him if he would send it out to all the council, and so when he does, I'd like to see where we are with that and see if they're appropriate or applicable now. Not that we're going to adopt them and, as I say, put them in concrete, but no matter, we can look at them and say, I think these are of value, and they may be of value to new council members or to the old ones who never saw them before, because at least three of us didn't get to see it. So I would like to have that opportunity. And the other thing I would like to say is, I, no, I don't, I'll reserve that. Councilman Maurer, do you have anything you would like to say?
I'm not at this time, except I'd like people to talk a little bit louder in the microphone.
Is it the council you're not hearing, or people on the, on the dais? I mean, on the podium?
I hear, I hear most people on the podium, but not everybody here.
Okay, so let's all try to speak up as loudly and succinctly as we can, so Mr. Maurer can benefit from our knowledge. Eh, Mike?
Thank you.
Okay. That was a joke, folks. Okay. All right. Any other comment? Okay. Then the next item is the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by city staff and will be approved in one motion if no member of the council or the public wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, then that may be removed from the consent calendar and will be considered separately with public comment before action is taken. Item number one, proposed action to approve a resolution awarding a contract, excuse me, a construction contract to Griffiths Construction to pave the dirt road on North Warner Street between Drummond Avenue to West Howell Avenue in the amount of 202... Oh, that was the change, wasn't that the change?
What was the change? Let me see.
Two, yeah, it was 27,000 needed to be added to it. So it'll be 220, 200... Tell me what the number is, please.
It's number two that was changed.
Oh, number two was changed? My apologies. Okay. 202,202 dollars, and authorize the city manager Dennis Spear to execute the contract. The next item is a proposed action to approve a resolution award a construction contract to Griffiths Construction Company to pave the eastbound Graff Avenue from North Sierra View to North Norma Street in the amount of 227,622 dollars, and authorize the city manager Dennis Spear to execute the contract. Number three, proposed action to approve a resolution for change order number one to add $10,000 to the contract amount of the professional service agreement with Quadcoff Engineering, and for one, additional design and engineering for, for expanded area; two, additional, additional ADA, I'm sorry, additional ADA ramp design; three, construction easement exhibits for, for drive approaches on the East Drummond Project; number four, proposed action to approve a renewal contract with York Risk Services for the third-party administration of the City of Richcrest Workers Compensation Program; number five, proposed action to approve draft minutes of the City of Richcrest Successor, City of Richcrest Council Successor Redevelopment Agency Financing Authority Housing Authority Special Meeting, dated June 29, 2016; proposed action to approve draft minutes of the Richcrest City Council Successor Redevelopment Agency Financing Authority Housing Authority Regular Meeting of July 6, 2016. Is there anyone in council who'd like to pull any item?
Number four.
Number four. Councilman Maurer?
I have none from the poll.
Pardon me? None? None to be pulled?
I don't want to pull again.
Okay. So is there anybody in the public who'd like any item pulled?
Number one.
Number two.
Number three.
Number four.
We want to approve the minutes of five and six.
Oh, motion approval of five and six?
Councilmember Maurer?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Acton?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sanders?
Aye.
All approved. Okay, item number one. Sir, if you'd like to address your concerns?
Yes. My question is, the contract calls for paving. The last time I was on that section of roadway, it was not suitable for paving, as is. It had bumps, it had potholes, it had big puddles, places that needed to be fixed. Is all of that included?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on item number one?
Ron Porter, this actually can address both of them, because it covers both. My first question is, I always, always wondered, and you don't have to answer it tonight, but I'd like to get an answer for me sometime.
Oh, we're on one and two.
Pardon? I think we're on one.
Yes, I know. I'm asked, this, this question applies to two, so why get up twice?
Or, which one are you, which one is he addressing?
One and two both talk about new paving, or one and, yes.
Oh, number one and the...
Right. I don't want to get up twice and don't waste your time. That's the only reason I said both.
Thank you, sir.
The question is, how are these selected? And I would like to actually know a little bit more about that, and you don't have to answer now. But my big concern has always been, and still is, that when we do these paving contracts, we need an independent inspector to watch over the contractor. I've been told many times, Ron, you don't really need that, but I personally know an independent inspector. And he actually, the contractors will, will bend the rules when they get the chance. He inspects for airports, he inspects for highways, he happens to work in Washington, but he finds that there's a problem with them complying with the rules, and we need an independent person doing that. So those are my two things. I'd like to know how we select these streets, and we really do need to have an independent inspector watching over them, because that protects the taxpayers' money and protects the city, and it's, it's just a good investment. Thank you.
Let's answer your question, okay? Sir?
Well, as far as inspection, we do have a consultant that independently inspects these, these projects. And then number two is, as far as the selection, it depends on the type of project. Both one and two, those are following our PMS, our pavement management system, they, which is required by FXWA and which is required by Caltrans, that we have a pavement management study done every three years now. Used to be every five, and these are listed projects that follow our pavement management system study. Now, if they were, if they weren't and they were programmed, then we have to go through current COG, and we have to submit, we have to apply under various programs. And if a project is selected and programmed, then it, once it reaches first the RTIP, the Regional Transportation Improvement Program, then the STIP, and then finally the FTI, then it's programmed, and we're probably about two to three years out before we'll actually be given authorization to proceed.
Thank you. Well, the question, and I'll add to it on, on the inspector, if it's not in the contract, maybe you want to think about it for the overseer of the contract, is, is there, is there, do they have certification requirements? And do they have to report back to the city as well as to the manager?
Yes, we have a QAP, which is our, a Quality Assurance Program. We're required to have one by Caltrans, and our contractors are required to comply.
No, not, not the contractors, I'm saying the inspector. Is he required to write, to, to write his reports back to the...
Oh, yes, it's certified, yeah.
Right, thank you.
Hi, Madam Mayor, I have a question now on something Mr. Spear's just said. You said that the both of these, one and two are in a, were determined by the pavement management system. Number one is completely dirt, isn't it? The Sanders?
No, I understand that, but I was trying to see, and I don't see the CMAC, so that was one of our...
I'm sorry.
Oh, it's not in the...
I can't. I can't.
Okay, those are both, okay, those are CMAC projects, and our participation is in terms of match money. And CMAC is for quality control.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
It's not listed.
Okay, was there any, let's just take one at a time, so it's easier. So is there any other questions on item number one? Okay, motion?
So moved.
I move approval.
Pardon me, you had a question, Mike?
No, I said I move approval.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Second.
Okay, for one and two both, or just one? Just one? Let's do them separately. Okay. Councilmember Maurer?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Acton?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sanders?
Aye.
All approve. Okay, item number two, I understand, then, Mr. Porter, you had your questions answered. Was there anybody else who had a question on item number two? Okay, then, a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Maurer?
I said second.
Yes. How do you vote?
Oh, aye. Sorry.
That's okay. Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Acton?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sanders?
Aye.
All approve. Okay, item number three, that was yours, Tom, that you asked for?
Yes. Just a quick question. Last time I asked, do all our contractors have to have city business license? And I was told by contract they are. Called the business office today, they could find no active business license with Quad and Off, either by Quad or Off.
They are consultants, not contractors.
Okay. So?
I don't know if we've ever required of consultants.
Okay, last time, when we had Will Dan and Quad and Off, I was told they were all required to have business license.
They're, both Will Dan and Quad and Off are consultants, not contractors.
I think he has a good point, and maybe we could look into that. No, not maybe, I'd like to look into that and have it part of, being part of the requirements, if they're going to take money from the City of Richcrest and for the services provided, that they at least provide their business license.
Absolutely.
But that is not what we're talking about right now, though.
And by the way, Will Dan does have a city business license. Okay? Because I asked that today, too. So it, I agree with you 100% Mayor Breeden. If they take money out of this town, they should have a city business license.
Thank you, sir. Is any other comments or questions on item three, council or anybody? Okay, motion to approve item three?
So moved. Second?
Councilmember Maurer?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Acton?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sanders?
Aye.
All approve. Okay, item number four, who asked to pull that?
That was me, Madam Mayor.
Okay, sir.
Real quick question, I'm not sure who to address it to in staff, but I noticed on the First Amendment, and then also noticed on page three of 18, it says that the term of agreements was July 1, 2015, and it continued through June 30, 2016. Couple questions. One was, were we out of compliance or anything during that lapse of time?
We've been doing on a purchase order, the agreement just recently was, I guess, negotiated between the attorneys that were involved, but more specific information can come from our city.
Yes, the, the attorneys were going back and forth with the language of the new contract, and so there was a continuation of the previous contract during that time. And so we were not out of compliant. We were meeting all the, all the state and federal regulations.
Okay. In reference to the new amendment or the new agreement, will it be an increase, or does it remain the same then?
There was a slight increase in the administrative fee. I believe it's about $2,000 difference.
Okay. Okay. And then, that doesn't, that's not consistent annually, is it? Each time we go for renewal, this is the first time that it's increased, or?
Yeah, this is the first time they've increased it in a number of years.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Porter?
Ron Porter, again, this is a very simple question. Are we self-insured? Do we, we should ensure that our workers comp through the state, or do we have a separate?
We're considered self-insured by the state. We have excess insurance coverage through a joint powers authority, a pool of other public agencies that brokers us different policies and different levels based on the type of coverage we need. Our self-insurance retention is the same as a deductible. The city is responsible for that amount on each claim. So for example, on a workers' comp claim, we pay the first $150,000, and then the excess coverage takes over after that, up to $50 million in coverage.
Okay, and thank you. That was actually more than I needed, but thank you very much. The second question is, this, these, this particular contract, these are people that administrator, they administer it and make sure that all the, all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed, is basically what they're doing?
Yes, and they continue the follow-ups until the claim is no longer in its existence.
Thank you.
Is there any other comments from council?
I just have one more quick one. Is that something that, that we go out and solicit other competition to provide us that service, or, or no?
We can. We did it in 2006, when we exited out of one joint powers authority and went to the new one that we're in now, CSAC. We went with Gregory Bragg and Associates, and the York Company later purchased Gregory Bragg and Associates. So we automatically went under them when they purchased the contract. We have not done an RFP or bid process since then.
Okay. And we typically do it, don't, is there a timeframe we do it? Like every five years, 10 years, where we go out and look at other vendors or anything?
Not on this one, because it's hard, because we'll, we have to determine through negotiations what's going to happen with the current open claims, whether they're going to stay in the control of the current vendor, or if they're going to go to the new vendor, and it's a very time-consuming process.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion approval?
Second. Councilmember Maurer?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Acton?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sanders?
Aye.
All approve. Okay, uh, item number seven, um, the proposed action to appoint a planning commissioner to replace the vacancy on the board. Uh, Mr. Sanders?
Um, I apologize, Madam Mayor and to, to the public. Um, I've been contacting several people. Um, however, I am not ready at this time to make an appointment. Um, I've, I've made some promises to talk to some people about it before making appointment for, and I want to make sure I, I follow up on that for, uh, before then. So, if we could push that off to the next meeting, I'll make sure that I have one ready by then.
I know at the, at Planning Commission last night, there was a lot of concern about filling, um, committees, because they didn't have enough people to fill the committees and they were very short.
Yeah.
And so if we could do that, or maybe, is there a way to, um, all you smart legal people, is there a way to have someone that if they agree, that they could come and sit at least and attend the meetings without our approval, or do they need our approval to attend the meetings and?
They need our approval.
Well, if, if they're going to be part of the planning commission, they need the, the council's approval.
Okay.
So, when is the, when is the planning commission's next meeting? We've got two here, next Tuesday. Okay. So, I apologize, I have made significant effort towards this. I've just been rejected like three times, so, um, it's, it's not always easy.
Maybe we should ask if there's anybody...
I understand the rejection, they do, because, wow.
If there's anybody interested, please talk to us.
Yes.
We need you now.
You know what scares me about that, Jim? You say you've been rejected three times. So, you've only had three applications then?
Well, no, I've, I've, I've interviewed the applicants, but I'm also talking to people that I know would do a good job. And I've, I've had a short list in my mind for a very long time, uh, people that I, I think would do a really excellent job at this. And I'm, I'm approaching those people and they're, they're turning me down. So...
I do have one person that would have done it last time, and I'll send him over to you.
That'd be good. But for good reasons, though. I mean, it's a difficult thing to ask. It's, it's a sacrifice and, and not everybody's positioned in their lives to make that sacrifice at this point, so...
So, there really isn't anything we could do until next council meeting to fulfill that position, or, so, carry on. And, and I'd like to make sure you all understand, here's our new, uh, planning chair, planning committee, what do you, what are you called, sir?
Chairman.
Chairman. Chairman of the planning committee, Mr. Warren Cox. Uh, and Commissioner Warren Cox. And so he was concerned last night about trying to fill all the committees. And so, um, but we will, we will do whatever we can to help you and get it done by the next meeting. Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, we'll take no motion on that. And the next item is proposed action to approve a resolution and it, and introduction and first reading and ordinance of the city council, the City of Richcrest, amending the Richcrest Municipal Code by establishing a temporary transaction, transactions and use tax to be administered by the State Board of Equalization and placing the measure on the election ballot for November 8th. And Mr. Spear?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this item is for discussion and potential action regarding the continuation, continuation of local funding to protect public safety services and address the street maintenance needs. Just a second, we have the wrong PowerPoint. And, uh, for the council's consideration tonight, we have the adoption of a resolution and introduction and first reading and ordinance of the city council and the City of Richcrest, amending the Richcrest Municipal Code by establishing a temporary transaction and use tax to be administered by the State Board of Equalization and placing the measure on the election ballot for November 8th, 2016. In terms of background, in June 2012, Richcrest approved Mezrel, which provides critical funding for public safety and police services in our community, including neighborhood patrols, crime prevention, and investigation programs, and 911 response times. Mezrel also provides funding to help repair streets and fix potholes. Mezrel included strict accountability, including an independent resident oversight, um, mandatory financial audits, and yearly reports to the community to ensure the funds are spent in a fiscally prudent manner. Recently, this Richcrest City Council received the annual report of the Mezrel Oversight Committee, which indicated Mezrel funds have been spent properly on addressing communities' top priorities, police protection, and city streets. Background, in terms of community engagement, the city has continued to engage the community about Richcrest's service needs and priorities. We continue to hear from the community that there is a desire to protect public safety services and better address local streets and pothole repair needs. Godby Research, uh, conducted a public opinion, uh, survey. The survey, uh, showed the community is highly interested in providing continued local funding, uh, with up to 67.9% of the respondents indicating that they would support a one cent local sales tax measure on the November 2016 ballot. Respondents are especially interested in preventing cuts to police and continuing to repair streets and roads. Top community services priorities continue to remain public safety, streets and roads, to continue city street and pothole repair, continue to fix potholes on neighborhood streets, maintain 911 emergency response times, maintain crime prevention and investigation programs, maintain neighborhood police patrols, and maintain current number of police officers. If approved, the proposed measure will provide funding to maintain current levels of public safety and police services, include neighborhood patrols, crime prevention and investigation programs, and 911 response times, provide funding to continue work to repair neighborhood streets and fix potholes. Richcrest streets have more than a $60 million deferred maintenance, uh, just to keep them in good working condition. The current local funding has helped to repair major streets and fix potholes, including South China Lake Boulevard from Upjohn to Bowman, Richmond Road Project from the fairgrounds to East Richcrest Boulevard, Bowman Avenue from Downstreet to, uh, South China Lake Boulevard. It also protects funding for 15 police officers who patrol the local neighborhoods. Without continuing protected local funding for the police and road repair budgets, half of the Richcrest police budget and all of the road repair budget would be lost. Required action tonight is to approve a resolution ordering the submission to the qualified electors of the City of Richcrest, a measure relating to the establishment of temporary transactions and use tax parentheses, sales tax, close parentheses, at the general election to be held on Tuesday, November 8th, 2016, as called by resolution number 1649 and 1650. Two, motion to waive the reading in full of an ordinance of the city council and the City of Richcrest, amending the Richcrest Municipal Code by establishing a temporary transaction and use tax to be administered by the State Board of Equalization and placing the measure on the election ballot for the November 8th, 2016. Number three, motion introduced by title only and ordinance of the city council of the City of Richcrest, amending the Richcrest Municipal Code by establishing a temporary transaction use tax to be administered by the State Board of Equalization and placing the measure on the election ballot for November 8th, 2016. And before there's discussion, oh, I can barely see appendix, I just wanted to, very quickly, I'll run through some of the streets and expenditures made. Uh, four streets repaired using Mezrel money. Uh, these are the types of materials that are used for prepping the streets. Uh, but we've, uh, prepped street surfaces using Mezrel money on Gold Canyon within the stated limits, on Norma, on Drummond, on Downstreets. We've surfaced lost floors between those stated limits. Spring of 90, uh, 2013, uh, the streets that Mezrel money was used on was, include Norma, include, uh, eastbound Ward, Lost Forest Avenue, Mahan Avenue. In the summer of 14, also, uh, surfacing of South China Lake Boulevard between Upjohn to Bowman, uh, the match money was provided by Mezrel. Also, there was, uh, the rehabilitation of Oregon from Ranger to Downs. In 2000, fiscal year 14, 15, in terms of surface streets, uh, Mezrel provided for the, uh, uh, the portion of Upjohn indicated here, uh, portion of Gold Canyon, portion of Fountain. Uh, in terms of surface street, also, uh, Mezrel money was used for the, uh, what they call desert mix for Drummond Avenue, uh, between the limits shown on Sunderland Avenue. And, uh, they prepped the street surfacing, uh, prepped the streets for surfacing or resurfacing of Richmond Road within those limits, Bowman Avenue within those limits. I know, Mr. Matthews, that's Bowman Road, we'll correct that. Uh, Raider Avenue between Nevada Street and Downstreet. And, uh, 2016, uh, the paving of Graff Avenue between Sierra View and North Norma. And then this is, uh, the street rehabilitation that's underway. Some of these have been completed, but it's underway, uh, as part of our PMS study that's being done with Mezrel money. And this is a listing of the streets, uh, where we're actually getting in, finally getting into the residential, uh, the neighborhood streets. And, uh, I don't know if, uh, do, do, nothing from, do you? Okay. And, uh, if, if the council has any questions, Captain McGlothlin's here to answer any questions regarding, uh, the importance of this measure for, uh, public safety.
Any council comments?
Uh, Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'm just curious, is how we arrived at 12 years on this?
I think I have the same question, too. I asked Mr. Spear to address that, please.
Uh, that, oh, you're talking about as far as the, uh, the term, the duration?
Yes.
Uh, that was, um, uh, recommended by our consultant, based on the, uh, the survey. As was the one cent.
So, the, the people were asked in the survey, would you approve a 12-year? Uh, and it was, were they given options, or was it just 12 years?
Uh, they were given, uh, various options. And the difference between, um, uh, five, seven, nine, and 12 was so insignificant that, uh, the, the consultant recommended 12 years.
Um, wait, because when I sat in that meeting on the consultant, correct me if I'm wrong, but actually, it was more on the seven, nine, and 12, that the public definitely supported it longer, but did not have, we did not have support, as much support for a five-year. It really had dropped significantly and went up quite a bit for the 12, was that?
That's correct, and that's what led him to believe that this time we should actually, uh, on the ballot, uh, indicate a longer period.
Councilman Maurer, you had the question. Did you want to follow up?
Uh, yeah, um, you said it, different percentages, and five was really low, and 12 was, was 12 the best? Did, did 12 get the highest percentage, or did another timeframe get a higher percentage?
12 seemed to do the best. That's what the recommendation jived with, as far as I remember from sitting in with them, um, when they went through it.
That, that was the recommendation of the consultant, based on the survey.
And the same with the amount, because they had asked different amounts as well. Um, and they broke it down by numbers, but, um, so that's what I remember. So, that was what, what the recommendation was, was what seemed to have the best response.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with the 1%. Mine's just concerned 12 years is a long time.
What happens if at seven years, we find out that it isn't sufficient? Because all the prices have gone up, everything continues to go up, everything continues to wear out. And quite frankly, we've seen, uh, some of, some of the people who are shopping out of town who aren't, aren't, um, participating in that as much as they could, uh, how do we, how, what do we say? I, I'm sorry, at seven years, we want to go back again, or do we just live with it?
If, you mean if you, uh, would approve it at 12 years and, and there's an indication that it should have been seven?
Or no, that we were, that it should have been higher. We're out of money. Uh, we're, I mean, I'm, I don't know how you'd make that determination.
Well, no, that, that's a, a policy decision of the council. Because even though it indicates, uh, that it's 12 years in the ordinance that's before council now, uh, that can be, uh, you know, changed tonight to read a different term, if there's a concern that, uh, we're too far out and you need to reconsider it a different time.
But let's say we approved it at...
I think, thank you, question was, uh, if, if it's approved for 12 years and seven years down the road, we have a problem. And we, we, I mean, is that correct?
I would believe you'd have to go back to the voters and, uh, rescind and reapprove it, or, or allow the voters to, uh, determine whether or not they wanted to, uh, rescind or whether they want, with a, a different, uh, proposal.
I'm, I'm not real happy about 12 years. I, uh, I understand our responsibilities and are not to look at these things lightly, but I don't know how anybody in their right mind can predict what's going to happen 12 years from now. I, uh, I think it's difficult to go five years. When I was talking to, uh, to, um, Mr. McKinney, I was asking him, how do you determine how you look for where your, where the city is at these particular times? And he said, we're generally right on in one year. We're pretty close in two years. Five and 10 years, we're not anywhere near close. And maybe you all are smarter than, and so, I'm not saying that you don't know. I'm just concerned of trying to say, I'm sorry, folks, we made a mistake. It should have been one and a quarter cents, and we want to come back and change, and, and change it. And I, I just want it to be, we do it right, we do it best, can we do it with knowledge and forethought? And I'm not saying this was not done that way. I'm just having trouble with 12 years.
Yeah, I've, I've been having, um, similar thoughts. I mean, five years in my mind was always kind of the, the initial five years was kind of a trial period. That's kind of how I always envisioned it. So, I, I, I think it makes sense to go longer than five years. Um, I'm not married to 12 years. I, I originally didn't see a problem with 12 years until people started asking me about it, and, and it got me thinking about it. So, um, mostly, I want to hear from the public tonight and what, what they think of the, the term limit. I'm open to changing it, um, but I'm also open to keep it the same as well. So, just, we'll see where the discussion goes.
Is there other council comment?
I, I do have, have one thought, and so hopefully the public can let us know, um, when you speak on this tonight, because this was my thought. Um, I didn't have any, any problem with the 12 years unless something really great happens and we get a lot more industry and we, and we don't need it, then take it back to the voters and, and get rid of it. Um, and I understand your point, what if we made a mistake? What if, or, not made a mistake, but inflation, whatever, we need more. Because this is, is, I don't want to say governed, but I, I, I'm trying to think of the correct word. But the public, it, it's very in the public eye, and then the public watches it. And we have an oversight committee that, that tells us, yes, you're doing right, no, you're not, yes, we have enough to cover this, or whatever the case may be. I think the feedback, because it's always there, i- is a good thing. And if it's not doing what we need it to do, then we would have that information, the public would have that information at the same time. And, and in my mind, then together, we can make that determination, you know, maybe we need to bring it back if we go with the 12 years. That was my thought process on it. But I don't, I'm not married to it either. So, I'm open to either way. Sir?
Well, not to continue to echo the same thing, but again, I'm, I'm not sold on the 12 years either. So, keep it short and allow the public to talk. That's why I'm...
Okay, is there public comment?
Uh, Warren Cox, uh, my, uh, address is on file. So, in relation... So, in relationship to Councilman Maurer's question, as a clarification, if I understand the law correct, and maybe you can share this with the public, or you can clarify it to me. My understanding is, the State Board of Equalization allows the county and the cities a maximum of 2%. So, if the city doesn't use the 1%, then the county can. But that window is really small, and so, to address your concern, is if in 5 years, we need to go to 1 and 1/4, we don't have an open end here, if I understand the law correct. There's only so much that can come to a local municipality. And so, maybe staff or the attorney would know, but I think 1% is our maximum. So, that's when, when you start looking at your budget, whether it's for public safety or whatever, this is our maximum, the rest is reserved for the county. But if we don't use it, then the county can use it, is how I understand the law. So, whether you use it for 12 years, 5 years, 7 years, I think you have a maximum. Anybody, that's how I understand the law.
I actually don't have the answer to that. That is something that would be pertinent to the council, but I have to look that up.
So, I, I just kind of thought that would probably be helpful for you to realize that you have a boundary anyway, it's just the years that you decide to use it. And when you're discussing this, you might consider that when you're hiring police officers, and you're making future designs for street improvement, so on and so forth, if you're doing it on a short term, plus the expense to re-put it on a ballot, you might consider those securities and expenses as well. Thank you.
Do, do I understand, then, about the county? Explain that to me. And if you don't know, then if you would explain it to me, that if we don't, if we can, if we can take up to 2 years, I mean, 2%, then the county can take the balance?
Well, that is what, what Mr. Cox is saying, I just don't know if that's correct. It quite possibly is, but I just have to look into that.
No, my understanding of the law is 2% maximum between county and city.
Oh, I see, so what the county is going for a 1% increase, like they're talking about doing...
Right. Your maximum is 1%.
Your maximum is 1%.
Right. And if we don't approve the measure, the county can then take it, and you can't come back and get it.
Wow.
Okay? Because the maximum is 2%, that's how the state has arranged it. So, that's how I understand the law, and the, and the county is taking their max. So, if you're concerned about, well, what if we need to increase it in 5 or 7 years? That's not your option. You can go down to a half a percent, but you can't go up to 1 and 1/4, 1 and 1/2. Now, that's how I understand the law, but that's just my assumption of the law, and I thought maybe somebody else could clarify, because I think that's Councilman Maurer's question, you know, well, what happens in 5 or 7 years if we have budgetary constraints? Well, that's, that's the limit you can use this particular law for.
Okay, Mr. Cox brought up a good point, because I've been told by a couple of police officers, they were quitting because they felt they didn't have a permanent job with Mezorl. And so, 5 years may not be long enough to keep all of our officers. You understand what I'm saying, you know, they look at it as, I've only got guaranteed funding for 5 years. So, I think 5 years is too short, I'm still not totally convinced 12 is appropriate. Laurie, what, what timeframes did they ask in the, in the survey? Do you know what timeframes they asked?
I know they asked for 5, 12, and it was either 7 or 9. I'm not sure if they asked for both, but I think it was 9 was the other one, I think, if I'm correct, because it was a while.
And 12 had a higher percentage of favorability than 9 did?
Yes. However, they were very close. I do, I do remember that. I cannot tell you how close they were, I'd have to go back and refer to my notes, and I don't think I have them with me.
Okay.
And then, what you just said about the county explains part of a conversation, and it's tickling my brain, so I'm going to see if I can remember that and look it up, because I knew that them going for the 1% would hurt our Mezorl because of the amount. So, but let me see what else I can find on that. Thank you.
Well, I had, I had heard that also, but I thought they could take it, whether, whether, because they could, they didn't have to go to a vote. And that was my concern from what you said, I thought it had to go to a vote with the county, so...
I think it does have to go to a vote for the county, I don't think they just take it.
Well, that's why they're coming back with the 1%.
I think they're, they're the same requirement as we are, they can't just raise taxes without a vote of people.
I got it, yeah. I don't know why, I had figured 8 years, only because it's a nice round number, and because it is 2 terms of, of the council, of 4, or it's 4 terms of the mayor, or whatever. So, there was some accountability by the council members. I don't know if 8 years gives our police officers, or anybody who's looking for a timeframe that, of funding, I don't know if that does it either, any more than 12 does. But I, again, I'm not tied to any number, I just thought 12 was a long time. So, I see, Mr. Neal, did anybody else have any comments on here?
Not right now.
I just, I, not a comment, but I have a question on the original measure. My understanding, when I first heard about Mezorl, please correct me if I'm wrong, was that the talk was that we would do it for 5 to see how it went. If it did well, there was talk of making it permanent. And I don't know if this was ever written to be that way, and I'm not saying that's what I'm, I'm wanting to do, I'm just wanting to make sure I'm understanding all of the nuances of this, because I remember that's how it was presented to me.
Originally?
Yes.
Like in 2012?
Yeah, way back in the beginning. And I don't know, because I wasn't on council.
I can't remember.
Yeah. And so, I didn't know if any of the public had been told that as well, so, I'm just trying to get everything in my head here.
Wait a minute, we got public comment coming here, so...
I want to ask your question.
Well, Mike was, Mike Neal was here first.
I'll, I'll answer what was just brought up. I was here for the whole thing.
Thank you.
There was a lot that went on during the whole discussion. It was brought to be, well, let's do it for 5, let's see if we can fix our problem, and if we can't, then we'll do it for another 5. That's what was stated at that time. The whole point was temporary sales tax. This was always supposed to be a temporary sales tax, short-term, and, you know, we'll fix the problem, so that we don't have to tax you guys some more. Okay? So, some of this has been presented here, raised some additional questions here. The research itself, I, I was in the dark that that was being done, and, and when it was brought up, when was the research results, when were they presented, and how can I get hold of that?
They will be on the website tomorrow morning. The, the reported information...
Was that presented to the public prior to tonight?
They, it's never actually been presented in document form, only in terms of the conference to the council.
So, only council has seen this, and not the public?
Individually, right, yeah, I'm sorry, that was, they were individual.
How much did we pay for this study?
I don't have the exact numbers, I think it was $25,000.
So, that was...
I'd have to check on that, but it's in that, it was in that range.
That was in, under your purview, city manager to pay?
That's correct.
Under $30,000. Okay. Since we haven't got a chance to see it, now we're being asked to, to, to talk about putting this on the ballot, I guess I have to ask, what, what was their methodology? I mean, you know, you can come up with results, that you want to come up with on a study, depending on who you decide to call, you know, and all kinds of other factors. So, so what was supposed to be the methodology? And, you know, they came up with, well, how many years would you approve it for? How much would you approve it for? So, with, and so on, you know? Any, any basics on that, at least?
Yes. Matter of fact, on that specific question, the 12 years and the 1 cent, there was an indication of 67.9% would approve that, and that's also based on a margin of error statistically of 4.72%.
Yeah, was this just totally random phone calls?
They had a different...
People out public?
They had both telephone and internet interviewing, as far as their collection.
And, and person-to-person, I think. Did they do door-to-door?
And that, too, I think.
And they walked, so they would be, be walking particular neighborhoods if they did door-to-door, then?
They, they, well, the, the bulk of the interviews were telephone, interview, internet interviewing, and the average length of an interview was 18 minutes.
Wow. Yeah, how many people?
They interviewed, for the sample size, they interviewed 412 individuals, or fam, households.
412. Okay. I have to say, that's a pretty small sampling to come up with anything to propose, something as extensive as this to, to the city. So, I would, I would not like to accept that methodology in an engineering proposal, I'll tell you that right now.
It was the same firm and the same, same methodology that conducted the study the first time that Mezorl was placed on the ballot, and the voters voted for it.
Well, I would have to say that it was insufficient to first go around, also.
Would you, do you think that the margin of error is too high, then? Is that what you're referring to?
I think sampling size is far too small.
Well, I know, but that, that relates to the margin of error. I mean, we're talking about plus or minus 4%, is that, in your opinion, too large?
Margin of error?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it's, margin of error is what it is. It's, you know, you don't govern that.
Well, it's governed by the sample size.
But if you increase your sampling size, you know, I mean, I could ask questions like, okay, did they go out and talk to these poor guys south of City Hall, who don't make hardly any money, obviously, and, and wouldn't want a sales tax? You know, they don't want any more expense than they can afford. Did they just go to the guys in the north end of town that are doing well? Or, you know, I mean, there's lots of, like, questions to be asked about, how did they get a representative sampling? How could you possibly get a representative sampling with this size of people? But, you know, I guess that's kind of under the bridge, water under the bridge at this point.
They went into some, some pretty specific detail on that, but part of that has to do with the amount of registered voters, and of those registered voters, how many people actually voted in the past elections, so that then they could draw their numbers, because it does pertain to those who are, who are voting, right? We want to ask those who are voting, so that's what makes sense to me. And then, there's another breakdown from there, and I'm sorry that I don't have my notes with me to go into all of that, but I can certainly try to.
What you just said, then, tells me that it was targeted to get it passed, because if you cared about what everybody in town felt about it, you wouldn't go to just registered voters, because every single person in town pays this, whether they're a registered voter or not.
But every person in town has the opportunity to register and vote, not all do.
Really? How about minors, who have to pay this?
Oh, geez, Mike, come on.
And you can't say every single person in town hates it.
Don't geez, Mike, sir, that, how many kids, how much money, do you know how much money is spent by minors in this town? How much sales tax they pay?
What are you proposing?
I'm proposing...
They shouldn't use the roads?
Actually, let's just drop it, because it's already done, it's water under the bridge. We should be talking about, we should have been talking about this before it was done.
You're, you're making some ridiculous claims against the survey and the council. Are we supposed to be surveying minors on an issue that's voted on?
First off, I'd like to thank you for your evaluation of ridiculous, as far as what I have to say.
Answer my question.
I appreciate that. I am in the process of answering your question. I don't, I do not appreciate being called ridiculous up here.
I didn't call you ridiculous, your claims are ridiculous.
Yeah.
And they are.
Well, we'll see. Since none of us are accomplished statisticians, my opinion's as good as your opinion, isn't it? So, it can't possibly be ridiculous in your mind, because you've known more about it than I do. So, let's go to something else. It confuses me, I guess this would be a question for the lawyer, that we're passing a resolution to put something on the ballot that's in ordinance. My understanding is that ordinances need to have 2 readings before the public, but since this is, you know, something that's pretty much just thrown up, more or less first time, to the public, on the ballot, and then it's going to get passed, how, is there a, something that excuses that requirement, or?
It is a first reading, says so, it's what we said in the beginning.
This is a first reading of the ordinance or the resolution?
First reading of an ordinance.
The way that works is, the second reading, the ordinance would not come back to council until after the vote had been taken. If the vote was successful, then it comes back to council.
Because we can't approve an ordinance that hasn't amended the tax? Is that why?
Because you're approving that, that ordinance to be placed on the ballot, to be passed by the, by the, by the voters. You're not approving the ordinance itself, you're approving the ordinance to be placed on the ballot. And then, if it passes, it's the voters that are approving the ordinance.
Okay. Well, I, I'm going to pose a basic philosophical governmental objection here to this methodology, mainly because, you know, this is a big deal, this is more tax on people, and the philosophy of bringing ordinances before the public for 2 readings, is for, so that there's 2 opportunities for looking at it, reviewing it, thinking about it, commenting on it. So, if I'd been on council, I would be, number 1, I'd be insisting that this had been brought before the public, a long time before this late date. I think this, the date, the time of this being brought to us, as I'm aware that there's a push to get it on, to be presented to the county, put it on the ballot, should have been about a month ago, so that we could have another presentation and more discussion after the public has had a chance to look at it and digest it and think about it. So, I'm just going to basically protest that we're going to bring it up, and obviously, you're going to pass it and forward it tonight, whether we modify it or whatever. But, you know, it really needs to be talked about twice in public comment session. And let's see, the research thing got my one question answered on my list here. The, so I'd like to point out something, and I don't think that it's actually addressed or prevented in the current ordinance as I, as I read it. And I thought about the fact that, number 1, we are still under the old Mezorl for about another year. And the old Mezorl will expire, according to the law it was passed under in November or October 2017. I checked this with BOE, I looked at their records, it went into effect October 2012, so it will expire October 2017. Now, if this passes after November 8, according to the BOE personnel's statement, this sounds like they're actually a little late. This could go into effect in April 2017. I personally think it's probably going to affect January. So, that means that we'll be paying 1 and 3/4% for 6 to possibly 9 months, because we're going to have both of these sales taxes in operation. Now, I raised this with the city clerk, her statement was, no, if we pass this, we will repeal the old one. However, there's nothing in the ordinance that says that, that I find at all. If I'm wrong, please point that out. Otherwise, we need language in here that either says, this will only go into effect on a certain date, not to overlap the first sales use tax, or specific language that says this will repeal the old sales tax when it goes, on the date that it goes into effect, so that people are not double taxed around here. And it would happen, and most people wouldn't notice it, because how many times do you take your sales receipt and look on there to figure out how much sales tax you're paying, and when, and, you know, it would just happen, and people would be paying it, and that would not, that would not be right. So, I am strongly requesting that that be specifically addressed, so that that does not happen should it pass.
What is the legal ramifications of that, if I may ask?
Well, the, the, the old Mezorl will, will be repealed and replaced automatically by the new one, so it's not going to be an overlap. We're not going to double tax anyone. It, it is in the resolution on, it states that the, the previously adopted sales tax will expire on its own terms, but there will be no overlap. If we need to change that, to make that more clear in the ordinance, we'll do so, but I just want to get that on the record.
But, I guess what you said is, is what I read, which... But I guess what you said is, is what I read, which doesn't say anything about preventing the overlap of the two, it just says, if you, in fact, if you, if you read it like a lawyer, you would say, the previous tax will expire on its own terms, that's going to be October twenty seventeen, because that's when it's set to expire. But when you put this forward to the state, they're just going to start doing their thing, and the clock's going to start ticking, and they're not, they're not worried about when one went in and when the others went in, whether there's two or anything else. They're just going to put it, put it on and start having it collected, and that'll be at, at the latest, April twenty seventeen.
Mr. Neal, I think it's, I think I can speak for all of us. I haven't discussed this with them, but nobody is intending to double tax anybody. So, if that is the case, we can certainly make sure that does not happen. That is not the intent.
That's exactly what I'm requesting by way of specific language that says so.
Thank you.
Okay. The issue of the percentage, point seven-five percent was not just pulled out of the air, and I don't actually believe from memory that, that it was even like polled, you know, and people were asked, well, what would you go for? It was, it was created because we wanted to take in one point five million dollars. And we wanted to take in one point five million dollars because our PMS study said we need to spend one point five million dollars every single year till the end of time maintaining streets. And that was actually the original intention, and so, of course, obviously, it changed. That's where that number came from. As it turns out, something worked better than you guys thought, and you're actually bringing in more than that these days. And in fact, if you're looking at the Mezural reports, committee reports, there's money coming in, not being spent on public safety, that's not actually being spent on streets either. So, point seven-five percent appears to be actually more than we really need. So, why take it up more?
The measure, the Mezural report did not say we were spending money on anything but streets or police.
That's correct.
I know that. What I said was...
Okay, I misunderstood you there.
That we're spending X amount of dollars on public safety, then there's, you know, whatever, T minus X left over for streets, and what's being spent is not that much. There's like, there's like money left over that we're not even actually spending up to date, even though we haven't spent close to one point five million dollars per every year.
It's carried forward because there are upcoming grants that we're going to need matching funds for, and that was the use, and that was the recommendation from the Mezural committee. So, that is what that's being held for. And my understanding on the one point five was that's what we needed to maintain our failing streets, and so with the X, we're actually fixing some of the failures so that we can go forward and maintain and, and fix some, and then maintain them well, so that we don't have such a failing grid on all of our streets.
Thank you for supporting what I just said then. Point seven-five percent's enough. We have more than enough with that. We don't need to increase that. Just because four hundred and twelve people said they'd go for one percent, you know, it's supposed to be in a, we're only going to take as much as we have to take. That was the whole approach from the beginning. Since we are doing well with three-quarters of a percent, we shouldn't raise it. Apologize for going on, but this is an important deal here. Twelve years, well, several of you've already questioned that. My, my response would be, you've got to be kidding, twelve years? When this was supposed to be temporary from the very onset, okay? Think about what you're saying if you pass it for even ten to the public. What you're saying is, well, we've been talking about economic development, economic development, economic development, but we don't think that's going to happen because we want to get this tax and ensure that we can get this tax that you for a pretty long period of time. And maybe, you know, we're just be happy with that. So, you know, people that want to read between the lines are going to look at that and go, you know, why do they, you know, why do they want it so long, to go on for so long when it was supposed to be something they wanted to actually try to get rid of at some point and not even have to continue taking from us? And, you know, they'd be going, I'm not voting for that because I don't want to assure that I have to keep paying this tax for a long period of time. Why am I getting buzzed? So, four years. Five years was a mistake because of election cycles. Do it four years, the next general election cycle, four years from now, if it has to continue on, you haven't figured out ways to fix your money inflow problems, then you can do it again. It's, it's easy to do, and it doesn't go against the original intent of this tax that, as it was initiated, okay? I think that may be all I have to say about that, other than, you know, that, those are important considerations, so I appreciate you looking at these things, and let's try and change and get it the way it ought to be tonight, that it's obviously going to go forward tonight.
Thank you, sir.
First, I want to answer Ms. Acton's question while Mr. Neal answered part of it. One of the biggest reasons it was proposed in the first place was because of the state stealing, because the state of California argued we have this state of emergency, and this was to try and get us past and over the loss of funds that were supposed to be temporary from the state. I really don't know what happened to them. I want to know what League of California City is doing about returning the taxes to the citizen, to the states and smaller governments that they stole. And that's something we haven't heard anything about or heard anything that the council's taken, to get those taxes returned.
Are, are you talking about the, the RDA pass-through funds?
No, no. They, they, they took highway funds from the city. They took a lot of different little funds. When the state declared their financial emergency, they dipped into all kinds of things.
Okay.
And that's one of the reasons is that this was, was written. The other thing that was, was sold to the people on this particular issue is that this is really primarily to pay for streets, and...
Public safety was, there was streets and public safety.
Well, let me finish the statement, and you'll understand. Public safety for the police was only to be for some of the supplies and maybe vehicles and small things because they didn't, it had to be a general, general tax and not a specific tax. If it was just for streets, it would have been, had to have a two-thirds majority vote to pass. And they said, the police was supposed to be a very small piece of this. In fact, it was stayed by every council member up there. This isn't going to be to pay for police officers. We have that. This is because we have to cover these other little pieces that we don't have. Just, just so you understand the history of what was put forth to the public. That's, that's all I'm bringing this up for. The, the, the police department, the public safety were put there in as a second thought to make sure that we have a bigger general, it wasn't meant, they said, we want to make sure you realize this isn't to supplement the general fund by paying for police officers and things that are already coming out of the general fund.
Okay.
Now, I'm going to get to my comment. We have a very serious problem, that one part of it, in the city with trust of our government following through. I don't see any reason to increase it. The four years would be perfectly satisfactory if we have to. One problem we have right now, as long as the state of California can get away with making you guys the bad guys, they're going to do it. They're going to say, I'm going to take money and he, you have to go and, and say, to your public and say, how much can I get into this? It's getting to the point in this country, I might as well just give it to you, and you can tell me what I can spend it on, and I'm not just picking on you. But that's what we're coming to. And even though you're a small agency, that's the reason you have the League of California Cities. We can sit up and say something about it. But I'm going to talk about our history. First, we started out with the sewer tax, which they sold it to the public. We're going to have this tax, and it's going to go in a separate fund solely to build a new sewer fund, sewer place. The maintenance of the sewer all came out of the general fund. Then they said, oh, by the way, look at, there's money there. We can take the maintenance out of the general fund, and we can put, and now we can put more of the general, we can spend the general fund in another way. Then we said, we can borrow from that. Then they said, we can put a franchise tax on it. Of course, that got overturned, but still, here we go down the same road. Kiernan McGee Park, when they took over Kiernan McGee Park, the state wanted them to take over parks. Well, this isn't going to cost us anything. Well, yeah, it is. We turned around, we says, okay, and I supported the effort to buy the extra property out by Kiernan McGee. But we agreed, and every city council member up there agreed that before we spend any money on that new property, we're going to bring it to the, to the floor and to the people. Didn't happen. This one here says, oh, well, we need this money. It's a scare tactic. We need this money because if not, we're going to lose fifteen police officers and two dispatchers. Well, the fact of the matter is, their agreement was it shouldn't be paid for in the first place. So, to me, I'm going, what else do I, can I trust anything that comes out of the city? And I'm not picking on you guys who are sitting there.
Shame on you. Shame on you.
No, shame on you for not listening to the public that thinks that they're being lied to. And I'm not going to back down, and I don't care. You can call me every name in the book.
I'm not calling you every name in the book, sir.
I, I know that. But the fact is, I, I didn't say anything about the people sitting up there. This is what our city has told, has told us. And when the city tells us, the next people in line have to stand up and say, we're going to honor that or put it back to the floor in its entirety. You may not like the idea that people did things before you, and you might have to follow through with them. But the city council works for us. And now I'm going to talk about the survey. The survey, number one, is inappropriate, the city ordinance may allow it. It's inappropriate for that to be approved by a manager. It's not general city business. That's something that should be approved by city council. It's throwing twenty-five thousand dollars away, and now we're saying we need money. You guys could have simply, simply set up here and addressed this. Well, here's an email site. We, we, we have the place to put, go ahead and take the survey. That's what they hired, I can't think of his name right now, just on a Neil for. So, we paid twenty-five thousand dollars for something we already supposedly have available to us? I never get asked on these surveys, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, I've never been surveyed.
I was. I was surprised, and they asked me if I had anything to do with the city, and I said, yes. And they hung up and said, thank you, thank you, and then they're out.
Yes, but surveys, without reading the questions, I can, I can write a survey to answer almost any question you want. And in this particular case, we're ending up increasing it, and we're ending up making it for twelve, I said, four years should be the maximum that should be approved for it all. We should have a second reading audit afterwards. I, I don't know where they came up with that wondrous great idea that it's, the second reading is the vote. I don't, this is something that's important enough, that's going to last long enough, it should happen.
Let me ask this question. Counselor, can you tell me, did, did, is that something we made up? Or the second reading, or is that the law?
Well, as long as there are two readings, that's what the, the law requires, and we're going to have two readings. So, we're complying with the law as it is. We're not making this up.
See, in an ordinance that didn't go to the voter, you'd have your first reading, and we'd come back to council. But this is for approving an ordinance that's going to be placed on the ballot. And once the, or, once the, the voters respond to, during the election, if that vote is positive, then it comes back for a second reading.
I disagree.
Is this how it was done with the first Mezural?
I believe so, yes. That's what I recall. Same, same procedure. I don't believe so. But the, the law that's written in California regarding second readings is so there can be public comment to the people that are voting on it, to put it on the ballot. And as far as I'm concerned, it doesn't meet the intent and spirit of the law. The intent and spirit of the law is to allow public participation. I just see us moving down a road where all we're going to do is continue to add taxes. When are we going to say, hey, we have to go back after this date, we have to do this? The government says that, well, the cost of living didn't go up, one percent. Well, anyone that's here that actually goes to the store or the grocery store, or pays twice that they have to pay for their vehicle registration, or realize that they just added ten percent tax to our gasoline, guess what? It's not there. And we need to say, how are we going to force the state back to, and you get the county as part of it? There's one thing that's been said many, many times over the years with the state, whether the, our, the property tax return, well, we get those lowest in the county. Well, how can that possibly be? That's a violation of equal protection anyhow you take it. How come people aren't, they, they say it, but where, why are we not addressing these things? Is it, I don't want a council that's sitting there rolling over and saying, hey, it's just easier to go out there and take some more out of my constituents' money, my pocket.
But we are standing up, and that's what we've been talking about the past couple of meetings, about standing up in the procedures and what we need to do to, so we can get some of that money.
Yes, but what have, what have we done as a city to go back to the state so you can't have it? What has the League of California City done to do that?
We've taken them to court.
We're taking them to court.
We've been in a multi-year suit against the state for, for many millions of dollars, and it's ongoing, and we keep fighting that good fight because exactly that, we need to fight that fight.
Well, but you just answered your reason why you only want it for four years. You don't want to have to take it to ballot to get rid of it. But we also don't want them turning around, and if we get that money back, and the state says, oh, yeah, you guys get it, we don't, we don't want them to keep it on there and, and decide this is the money, and this is how we're going to pay for stuff in the future. It was put on there as an emergency fix to help cover the roads primarily. In fact, ninety percent was supposed to go to the roads.
I don't think there was a percentage at all.
No, 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 no. That, that's what the councilman said, this, we want the, the bulk of the majority of this to go to roads. I sit here, I write here and listen to it all. And to, to raise it, I don't approve. Go any more than four years, I don't approve. And Mr. Neal is absolutely correct. Since this is a new ordinance being written, it can be two taxes at the same time. I asked that question, and as I looked at it, is a new ordinance, it's not, it's not modifying the old ordinance. It's a new ordinance. So, there's nothing that would prevent it from being two taxes at the same time. I understand that you don't intend that, but it can be, easily be used for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lindsey Stevens. So, first off, I'm very thankful for our police and definitely don't want to see fifteen positions lost from our department. I'm concerned, I, the survey will be posted on the website, you said. Will that just be easily accessible on the website, not buried?
Yes.
Okay. Because I'd definitely like to look at that, because I'm concerned that the time, the time limit, the twelve years, might affect the vote. I think, just like you guys stated, twelve years is a long time, and I feel that despite being surveyed, only four hundred people, that, that may not represent the voters fully. Also, I keep hearing, I was, we moved here in two thousand and twelve after this vote took place. So, I keep hearing different stories about what was historically promised about this Mezural. And so, I was wondering if there's any way that someone could pull up and make a brief report of what was promised previously, because we have Lori saying that it was five years plus, then it might be approved indefinitely. Then he's saying it's five years temporary plus maybe another five years. Also, there's concerns about what it was supposed to be used over, you know, whether it was supposed to be for paid positions or just cars and such. So, I think it would be worthwhile if there would be something put up saying what was initially...
The ordinance is, is accessible, both on the ballot from last year that you can see, and also on our, it is on our website, is it not, sir?
It has been.
Yes, it was for a long time.
Okay.
There's also minutes from those meetings. And the minutes, I'm sorry, too. Thank you.
It was just the spirit of the discussion was all I was trying to, to gauge because for some reason, that stuck in. some reason, that stuck in my head. That was all.
I just think this, like, a brief summary of it, though, would be helpful, because there has been a lot of misconceptions that I've heard and differing opinions. So if there was a quick summary, rather than having someone go read through the full ordinance, that might be helpful.
It's my recollection, the then-city manager actually presented a PowerPoint to the council regarding the proposed use of L. And generally, the PowerPoints that are associated with council meetings are posted as part of the agenda, and those are all online.
Could we maybe repost that towards the top with this survey, so that we could see them concurrently, rather than trying to dig through and find when that presentation was made, possibly?
Well, these can be posted tomorrow, but as far as research, what meaning that was, that would probably take a little more time on, rely on the court for that.
So then, I would ask that we could possibly delay this vote for the ordinance until after the public can review the survey results, just so that we could have more information to be able to analyze if we feel like that survey would represent the voters. And also, the pavement management system, the report you stated earlier, what was the timeframe that those have to be updated?
Until a couple of years ago, they were every five years, now they're every three years. We currently have our consultant completing the most recent PMS study.
Okay, because the one I found on the website was 2011, so I just didn't know, is that the latest version, the 2011 one?
That's correct.
Okay. Yes, so, let's see, I think that's everything. So if, does anyone have a general ballpark of when that presentation would have been made, so that I can try and find it?
It would have been prior to June 2012.
Would have been around January or February in 2012, that they started those discussions.
Warren Cox, again, I just thought I'd make a couple of suggestions. One is, when you're considering your timeframe, since there is some concern, you might consider not having it on a general election, maybe a midterm, you know, and stagger that a little bit, because there's a lot of other things that are going on in a general election. The other suggestion that I would probably throw out to you is, as was alluded to, the funds that the state took away from us that affected the general fund, which affected the police department, so on and so forth, it might be nice to educate maybe the public where the losses were and how you filled the gap. I know that we've talked about some of those things in committee, but unfortunately, not everybody's privy to some of this information. And so we have to, as a community, decide what kind of a community we want. It's one thing to say, drop it to .75, and we could do that, but the county will take it. It won't save the citizens anything. And our maximum is 1%, whether it's enough or it's not enough. And so the county's taking what they can. So if we're really trying to save the citizens, you're not going to save it by affecting the percentage. And so it's important to understand the way that law is written. So the suggestions, I think, is more of an education, what monies have we lost, and how have we tried to recoup them? From the gas taxes, or whatever it is, to fix our streets, for public safety, for everything, how can we help the public understand why we need this, or why we don't need it? So that it doesn't become a fight here. I get a little bit frustrated, you know, hearing complaints with no solutions. And so I'd like to throw out those two solutions for you to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Porter.
Just a quick thought. Mr. Spears made a comment of changing the requirement from surveys from every three years to five years. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Spears, that's a state requirement now?
That's the pavement management system.
Yes, that's a state requirement?
Ah, yes.
Well, there's a funny little thing that they have in this state, it's called the California Constitution. California Constitution says when the state mandates that you incur an extra cost, they have to pay it. When they changed that, from three to five, we incurred extra costs. I want to know why the city's not going after it.
Dave Matthews. First of all, I have a question. Ms. Ford, what is the time limit for putting this on the November ballot?
All submissions must be at the county office and verified and approved by 5:00 PM on August the 12th.
Thank you. The suggestion to put it on a midterm election would put it after the current ordinance expires. That would be two years out. Mr. Neal says it, and I guess the measure L will expire in October next year. So we'd have, we'd have a period where we had nothing. So before I get too far into the questions, my concern was, and by the way, 200 out of 25,000 is about a little less than 2%. So I don't think that's a very good sample, and that was something that I was not aware that was taking place. I don't know why, but I wasn't. When I saw this tonight, I thought, wait a minute. You got two things you're changing on the current, from the current, actually, in my estimation, you should have three items on ballot. Number one, do you want to renew that tax? Number two, do you want to increase it or keep it the same? And number three, do you want to go, some people said four. I'm happy with the five. I would say maybe 10, but 12, I don't know, that's kind of far out. And so my fear was, when I saw this, that you were backing yourself into a corner, because there might be people that want to renew it, but keep it at the 3/4%. Now, with what Mr. Cox has brought up tonight, I don't think I would support that at all. I'd rather have it here, that other quarter percent, than let the county take it. Because, as I've said in the past, this is the kind of tax that I've been pushing for. I don't like taxes any more than we need them, but this was the kind of tax that I would, I heartily support, because we collect it here, and we get it, we spend it all here. We don't let Calif, you know, the state or the federal government take a bunch of money and then decide that, well, you get this little pittance here, and we'll take the rest. That's been an issue that needs to be pushed back on for a long, long time. So I don't want to lose any funding by delaying the election, or the measure on a midterm ballot. If we put it on next year, that's a special election, that's going to cost us more. So I don't think that we have that option.
I think, I think Mr. Cox's point was that it would sunset on a midterm election. So for an example, two years, six years, or 10 years? Is that what you were saying? Yeah?
Well, that's not the way I understood it, but anyway. I will support the renewal, whether or not I would support 12 years, I don't think so. And I'm not sure about a lot of other people. And so I don't know how, we can't wait forever if we're going to get it on this year's election ballot. So we need to resolve some of these things, I think, here tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Board of Education, or Board of Education, my goodness, Board of Equalization website, I have some information on that county and such, I just need to run it by our attorney
Honorable members of the council, my name is Stephen Morgan, welcome to my nightmare. 729 North Inyo Street. I'm not going to go back through the entire history. I am going to assume that you have done your homework on this issue, in what was done previously. I will admit that my thought process during the two previous attempts that failed for this measure, before measure L passed, was that we would spend more on the streets and the roads. That's my own personal opinion, and it was my personal opinion at the time. And I did state that. However, times change. And it has always been true in this community that public safety is number one. Every survey we have ever done in any format we have ever done it in, historically, public safety is number one. Therefore, I do not fault where the money is being segmented to. However, I do believe 12 years is far too long, and I would have a problem supporting it. And here's the reason why. We have a system that we put forward to the council, through the infrastructure committee, and to the public about the pavement management system specifically. And we have a really good idea of what we're going to do next year, and we have a pretty good idea of what we're going to do the second year, and we have a list for maybe the third year with some numbers that could be available, and then after that, it's all kind of nebulous. And you're going to have difficulty, I believe, in discussing with the public how you can justify a 12-year term. Now, we can assume that, well, we would like to assume, that revenues will increase in our community, and we would be able to wean ourselves off any such measure. That has not been the case up till now. And the public has seen the maintenance of our police department and our public safety, and they have seen an improvement in the number of public works jobs for streets. You have that advantage that I did not have. By using your pavement management system and a good set of numbers for X amount of years, you will be able to better justify the term length. I believe that will help you in making your decision on how long the term should be. I admit, 12 years would be wonderful, but if you look at the revenues from measure L, and you assume 2 million a year, let's just lowball it a little bit, okay? Can you, when this, when you pass this, in whatever length, can you reasonably justify to the voting public the expenditure of that amount of money? That's where you need to be. Because people are going to not like it, no matter what term you pick, and no matter what percentage you pick. You have been, your survey, which I'm very disappointed was not here today, that probably would have helped you out a great deal. And I'm sure you'll have it at the next meeting, as well as, I understand, it's going to be on the website. Thank you very much. You were very cautious about, you went from 3/4 to 1%, which I believe in. I believe that's correct. Because you're going to be able to put more money into streets by doing that. I see where you're going. But getting those numbers better defined for the battle that you're going to have, in whatever form that takes, is incredibly important. And I would definitely request that you seriously consider a shorter term, maybe six to eight-year timeframe. I think you've already proved, as a council and as a staff, to the public that the money is being appropriately used, you've crossed that bridge. Congratulations to you. That is a huge milestone. But be careful about getting into arguments that you cannot win in this, once you decide. And by the way, in my recollection, we had a first and a second reading, and what was passed on the ballot was what was done. Okay? Now, that's my recollection, okay? Now, I do not know that 100% proof positive, but that is what I believe to be true. We voted on a certain language, a certain timeline, and a certain percentage. We had a second reading, it went to the ballot, once it was passed, the clock started ticking. That's what I believe to be true. So take that into consideration, I'm sure the city attorney will be looking into that. I also do, in Mr. Cox's comments, I remember something about you can do so much, but I cannot recall what that was. So, yeah, that is, that is, that is a piece of information you'll need. But I want to thank you personally for what you're doing. It's not going to be easy for you to talk about this through the election. Obviously, you don't want it, if you need to change the language, please do, to make it a continuing, so there is no double taxation, even thought process. Get rid of that now. Deal with that now. But whether you go with .75 or 1%, I believe in 1%, and I believe in a shorter term, and I thank you for your time.
I want to thank you too, Mr. Morgan, for your efforts with the Measure L Committee. I attended many of the meetings, and I am very, very proud of the work that our Measure L Committee did, and especially all your efforts, too. And where is the rest of the committee? Ah, okay, there they are. I'm sorry, I haven't got my long-term glasses on. So, thank you all. The Measure L Committee has done a responsible, comprehensive, and remarkably honest report. I'm not saying any of them in the past were not, but this was great, because you put it all out there. You didn't make judgments until the end. I'm very proud of the work you did.
Hello, I'm Mike Cash, and thank you for all the comments. I now have 32 items to discuss with you. Just kidding, just kidding. Stan reminded me, Stan's been my mentor for decades on base, and he reminded me, you know, Mike, if this goes 12 years, you won't be around. And I said, you know what, Stan, you're right, but my kids and grandkids will still be here. I want to take a completely different approach. And again, I do appreciate all the comments, I don't understand nuts and bolts about all of this, and I've been very enlightened. I must say, I'm feeling rushed with all of this, I got to tell you that. And there's four places that I want to spend my tax. And there's four places that I want to spend my taxes. You know, I'm a 60-year resident here. Parents, my brother and I, our kids, our grandkids, whether you've been here 60 years or one day, this is gonna affect us if you shop in our community, which I do. And my kids do, and my grandkids do. And there's four areas that I will always, that I'm very passionate about and aggressive about. And I'll let anybody know, and I'm not ashamed that I want to spend my money on, my taxes. I want a fixed pension, so I'm not gonna get any more money. I gotta deal with what I got. But when it comes to the protection of our country and our military, and the men and women who serve our country, I'll put my money there every time. When it comes to our schools and our school system, I will put my money there every time. When it comes to infrastructure, safe roads, and so forth, I'll put my money there. And when it comes to public safety, I will put my money there. That's the four places that I focus on. And I want to tell you, there's 49 of us that got together here in the last few weeks. We were never surveyed, but the reason we got together is because we believe in the same things. We live here, we vote here, we buy here, we're protected here, and we drive our streets here. And I want to make very sure that you understand where we're coming from. And that is, we support right sizing of public safety. Whatever that looks like, we want it to be the right size. Now, I pushed really hard to get the Town Hall meeting here with the sheriff and dealing with the jail closing. I've been out there picking in front of the county building, trying to keep that jail open. Because that's how passionate I feel about the safety of our community. But I rarely ever hear about the safety of the men and women that defend our country or are in our police department. And I'm telling you, if we're not right sizing, we're not doing the right thing, it affects their safety too, because they're part of us. And I want to make that connection clear, because whether it's another tax, whether it's 12 years or four years, I want it to be the right amount and the right number of years to give us what the sheriff told us over and over again, "Ridgecrest, you should feel blessed. You don't have gangs here. You should come to Bakersfield," you know, if you want to see what problems are. And you know what? I'm proud of our public servants, our public safety, and it's a joy to drive down these new roads. And I'm willing to pay for it. Okay? We're willing to pay for it. We're ready to go out and do the right thing. We just need to know what the right thing is. And I'm still confused today what the right numbers are. I've been enlightened by the comments. I appreciate that. But we want to do the right things, for my kids, for my grandkids, as Stan reminds me, Mike, you won't be here. But it's for the future too. I don't know what the answer is. I want you to find out what the answer is. And if you're gonna tell me that it's 3/4 of a cent or 1 cent to do the right thing for infrastructure and public safety, then I'm gonna do that. But I want it to be the right thing, for now and for the future, whatever that is. I want to thank the Oversight Committee for doing a great job. Kudos to them. I believe that if this moves on, they would stay in place, or somebody like that would stay in place, and I appreciate that. So, I guess my closing comment is, I support public safety, I support roads. I want it to be the right number, the right kind, to keep all of us safe, including our law enforcement. I want them to be proud of being here in Ridgecrest and not looking for another job somewhere, wondering if their salary's still gonna be there. There's kids in our police department, and I watched them grow up from zero. And now they're serving us, serving our community. I want them to stay here. They're an incredible asset. If you want to look at turnover, look at our Sheriff's Department right now. The turnover is huge because of the budget issues. So I appeal to you, let's do the right thing, the right numbers for our community and for our kids, for our families. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sir.
Good evening once again. My name is Stan Rettora. Just so that I don't confuse any of you, I am neither for or against what has been proposed. I do have some questions. And I also have three inputs. Starting with the questions, I noticed in the staff report, under the line that says fiscal impact, it says undetermined. Could somebody go into a little more detail as to what is meant by undetermined under fiscal impact?
Well, with respect to what's being proposed, it would, first of all, it would have to pass. Because if it didn't pass, it would be an immediate impact to the city. We'd be down $3.5 million a year. But we don't know that, because there hasn't been a, the vote, the election is in November. And then with respect to the 1 cent, that just depends on sales. That depends.
Yeah, I guess I was referring more to what really would be paid. I've got some specific questions that might be easier to look at in those terms. Is this going to permit repayment of the wastewater loans?
No.
No. Does that, everybody agree to that?
No, the, what we're proposing to carry on the same pledge to stick with Police and Roads. With this, with this new tax that we're proposing.
Okay. Is it going to permit funding of Groundwater Sustainability Agency?
Police and Roads, that's it.
Police and Roads, okay, because right now, the GSA is not funded in the current budget, okay? Is it going to permit pay raises for the city employees?
Police and Roads, that's it. Really, that's the only thing.
Our employees haven't gotten a raise for how many years?
10 years.
2008.
2008, okay. So, okay. So, that's the questions that I had. I want to provide you three inputs. Don't, I don't want you to take these negatively. They're they're inputs that I would like you to consider with, in your discussion and within your thinking when you have your discussion. Just a little bit about the magnitude of our problem. I've been looking through the various budgets, both the CAFERS and the FY17 budget. And I note that in the last six years, the general fund expenditures have increased $1.9 million. Okay? Also, in the last six years, non-Measure L revenue, that's what we normally, what we used to call the general fund revenue, it just doesn't include the Measure L revenue, it has decreased[1148.62][1149.42]$1.0 million. So, from a general fund standpoint, the general fund is $2.9 million worse off today than it was in 2011. And of course, we know we were millions of dollars short back then. That's why we declared a fiscal emergency. This is not going to solve our problems, all right? As one other speaker, I don't remember which one it was, mentioned, this was supposed to be a temporary thing. Obviously, it didn't work out that way. I am disappointed that we are actually in worse shape today financially than we were seven years ago, and I'm assuming four years ago, when we first had our Measure L. So, we have a significant problem. So, again, doesn't mean I'm either for or against, just we've got a significant problem. And we need to deal with it, but my hope was that in that four-year term, we would actually do something to better our position. We've had some small successes. And that's great, because otherwise, we would have lost more than the $1 million that we did lose. Just a comment about the nature of the problem, and I have a disagreement, I guess, with the wording of the resolution. The resolution, I believe, overstates the impact of the police and the roads in this whole area. If you look at that $1.9 million of increased expenditures between 2011 and fiscal 2017, of that $1.9 million, $1.4 million of the increase is the result of non-Measure L expenditures. So that tells me that police or Police and Roads are not the total problem by any means. If it weren't for spending an additional $1.4 million on non-Measure L expenditures, we could afford to, we could afford, we could use less Measure L money for police and more Measure L money on roads. So, part of the solution, my feeling is, that we need to control the growth of the non-Measure L funding. And obviously, I totally support police, like everybody else that stood up here tonight. I'm not, that's totally true. About the duration, my feeling is that 12 years is too long. What you're assuming is that we're gonna have no economic growth for 12 years. Or, or at least that's an assumption. My feeling is, we need to do something about our economy, our tax base. Now, we can't wait for six months, pardon me, six years or 12 years. I would like to see a plan that actually combines a tax increase with how we're going to get more income, more economic growth, more jobs, so that when this thing expires, whether it be four, six, or 12 years, and by the way, I, my feeling is, four years is probably good. But we can't keep going on kicking the can down the road. We need to decide, do we want to be a city? Do we want to grow? Do we really want to be our own community? Because we can't continue the way we've been going for the last five to 10 years. We've been having problems for at least 15 years. My feeling is, we wouldn't have taken the money out of the wastewater fund back in 2006 if we weren't already in trouble. All right? We need to get out of this hole we're in. And even though this may be part of the solution, my feeling is, if we really looked at this in the big picture, it should be just part of the solution. It can't be the solution. Because if we really wanted a tax measure to pull us out of where we are, we would have to have, in my mind, a minimum of 2% to 2.5%, which I don't think we're ever gonna get. We need to have a total economic growth program. One of the things, back in 2008, I had suggested that when we went through the new general plan, that we include an economic development element within the general plan. And I actually discussed that with one or two of the city council people. The comment that I got back from one was, hey, we've done that before. It doesn't work. It's a waste of time and money. And I see this being a continuation of basically that mindset. We've got to turn the mindset around. We need to grow. We need to be economically stable. And this tax is a Band-Aid, and it may be, we're probably gonna have to continue it for a while. I don't think we should have to continue it for 12 years. If we have to continue it for 12 years, my feeling is, we'd be better off going back to the county. I don't think anybody wants that. I think most people would dislike that. But let's face it, we're in serious problem, and we need to start acting like we got a real problem, not just when the budget is here, or when something like this needs to go on a ballot. We need to act like this constantly, every month, and keep this at the forefront. So, again, I'm not for or against. I just want to make sure that we're not using a Band-Aid upon a Band-Aid, and we continue with the mindset that we're gonna continue to Band-Aid forever, because it's not gonna work. Thank you.
Wait, Stan, before you run away, I do have a question on what you touched on, because I agree, it is Band-Aid, and I don't think any of us are saying there's no, we don't want or don't foresee economic growth, because that's, this is the most progressive I've ever seen the council, not progressive, aggressive, on economic development, and really trying to get it out there and looking for solutions, and then wanting to act upon them. And it's exciting. It's an exciting time for that portion. But we've also had some devastating legislation with AB 109 and Prop 47, and now Governor Brown's looking at Prop 57. And with that, the crime that comes, and our own, we may not have gangs, but we're still dealing with increase in robberies and burglaries and those types of things, and then we lose our jail. To me, that is kind of where the Band-Aid fix until we can get more revenue in comes in, not so much that I don't see economic development. When you were looking through the numbers and such, and I know numbers are very black and white, but do you, did you see a correlation with any of the legislation that passed in those years that you looked at with maybe a spike in our numbers at all, or decrease, I should say, a larger decrease in our numbers?
Well, unfortunately, one of the problems that I discovered in going through was that the increase in the total budget was more impacted by, that is, of the $1.9 million of increase, $1.4 million was for non-Measure L stuff. Probably not the right word.
It's okay.
And .5 million was for safety and public works.
Okay.
So, so overall, the budget for safety is, in fact, I think, it's only been the last year or maybe two where safety and public works actually went up at all. But for some reason, this particular year, we saw a tremendous jump in the total expenditures. And unfortunately, there's more of it allocated to the non-Measure L than to the Measure L stuff. So, you, based upon, actually, the police for the first three years, and I think quite probably the fourth year, was very straight line. The police, gotta hand it to them, they've done an excellent job with doing more with less, to be quite honest. They, you know, have nothing but accolades for what the police have done. I, you know, if one assumes that they really needed the money they had before the RDA went away, they've gotten a decrease, okay? So, no, I have not seen any correlation with the amount of money that they spent, that has been spent relative to those particular state laws. I think- I think that, quite frankly, I think you're just working harder, based upon what I've seen.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. And thank you.
Once again, you got excellent advice from Mr. Rittora. I wish we had you on the council stand. Little sidebar thing I just thought to look at here, with the facts that were put out about the survey we had done, I think we could have done a whole lot better and cheaper on this survey. If you take 412 people, and as you say, it took 18 minutes on average to talk to those people, we paid $200 an hour for that survey to be done. That's another high-cost thing. I keep seeing these high-cost things like our restroom slash concession building at the ballpark, which we paid $600 a square foot for, and that hasn't been made known public, I don't think. That would, you know, we just don't need to keep overpaying for things. Now, this is actually an instance where, if the council were to think that Mr. O'Neill had good access to a lot of people, be a whole lot better off to pay him 30 bucks an hour and go get some survey results about something like this than to pay $200 an hour to some, whatever they are, you know? Just because there's some research company, we would have saved the city quite a bit of money. Had a good suggestion made, I don't think it was ever even considered the first go-around, might even actually help you get it passed, is that you put in language into this ordinance that specifies what percentage of these funds will go to streets and what percentage will go to police. And then people, you know, won't be wondering, oh, you know, what are they going to spend on what, you know? And I really want the streets fixed, but, you know, I think there, we've had people up here complaining because they offered this all on their own, you know, that I didn't, I was told they were going to fix streets, and I don't see a lot of streets up being done, you know, around town. And actually, there has been street work, but to be honest and open to people in this town, with all the signs around that says, your street's being fixed by Measure L and TAB fund, well, most of those signs should say, your fixed, streets being fixed with TAB funds and a little bit of Measure L funds, because that's actually the case in almost every one of them. So, might help, actually, for you to get it passed, to decide on some reasonable percentage, even say 50/50. And then that's what it has to be, and it can't vary over time. And, you know, each entity has to figure out how to work with that. So, that's all.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment?
Really quick, I pulled up the agenda and the minutes for the meeting, I found, it was February 15th, but there was no presentation, and there's no video on the website for that meeting date, so if it would be possible to find that PowerPoint, that would be helpful.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, any other public comment? Okay, we'll come back to council. Council comment. Oh, Mike, have you got anything to say, sir?
Yeah, I'm still here. I'm totally in favor of the 1%. I would feel more comfortable with eight years.
Okay.
That's my two cents.
Okay. All right. Any other council members?
Yeah, I've got a lot to say. So I think the comment about the two measures overlapping is a good one. Mike, thank you. Looking over this, I don't see exactly how they could, but I want to eliminate any and all perception even that they might be able to. So, I'm not sure.
You know, my concern about that, Jim, is number one, I would never vote for it to be overlapped. Number two, I don't think legally, state of California would allow it.
I agree with you, Mike. Yep. I, I'm concerned that the perception of the public, however, might be, I mean, the information might get out there and rumors start flying, and we just don't, we just don't want false rumors to be going around anyways. So let's, let's figure out what language.
I would think it'd be real easy to put a sentence in there that says, this replaces Measure L.
Yeah.
There, just by that, this replaces Measure L, thereby, there's no question about it wouldn't be over that.
So, to our city attorney, we don't have anything in the actual ordinance that would lead to that, do we? I mean, it's all in the resolution, any language?
Yeah, we don't have anything specific in the ordinance itself.
I didn't think so.
The assumption is that these two measures can't coexist anyway, but we can certainly add simple language, it could be one sentence to take care of this.
Okay. So I'd propose that we add that. So one comment that was made, well, I'm just going to make a couple of comments that kind of captures a few of the public comments. The first Measure L was passed prior to the abolition of the RD Redevelopment Agency, trying not to use acronyms here. I agree with the comments that were made, that the current state at that time was, this is a temporary fix. I don't remember quotes to that effect, but I'm not going to argue that point, because that may very well be the case, because I remember that time, and I remember just kind of the feeling at the moment that, you know, we were in a little bit of an economic lull. We thought, you know, a few years, we're going to get out of this. Well, the state came along and did what nobody thought they could legally do, and that was abolish the Redevelopment Agency. And a good portion of the city was getting, was, a lot of money was coming in to our city staff from the Redevelopment Agency, because they were working on those things. This left us with an enormous budget deficit that we had to take care of, me being one of those, we, in my first year on the council. And so what may have been a temporary problem at the time when we first passed Measure L became a permanent problem due to the abolition of the Redevelopment Agency. That, I mean, that threw everything off with respect to Measure L. Because the whole, the whole point of Measure L was to supplement the police budget, to supplement the public safety budget. The best that we were able to do was to maintain it to where it was previously, and I don't think we actually did that. I think it even dropped below that. I can't remember off the top of my head. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's one of those situations where you can, you can say, well, the intent was this, the intent was that, and you're absolutely right. I think those intents were real, I think they were sincere, I have no doubt about that. But when you come into an actual scenario where you have problems today that didn't exist back then, everything changes. And so I'm not in favor at all of defining a split right now, because I don't know what the council's going to be dealing with in two years. I don't know what the council's going to be dealing with in one year, whether or not I'm even on it. So, that is completely unfair, in my mind, to the future councils, because they need the ability to deal with the problems of the day and to balance their budget as it is at that time. So a few comments have been made, critical to the survey, and critical to the idea of even the concept of us doing a survey. In my mind, it is completely irresponsible for us to go to the voters without, to ask them to pass a tax, which is a pretty big deal, without even having an idea of what they want. Now, this, the survey was very helpful in helping us understand what you want. The survey told me that the number-one priority was, well, I'm going to botch it up if I go by memory. I know 911 response times was high on the list. I know pothole repair was very, very high on the list. And again, it all focused on police and roads. And it was pretty much equal, from what I remember, in terms of one not being greater than the other. So, in terms of the term of this, we've heard lots of good input. I'm leaning away from the 12-year period. Originally, I didn't really see anything wrong with it, but I'm listening to your comments, I'm listening to the input, and I'm thinking eight years is sufficient. That gives two full terms of election cycles, two four-year election cycles. I think that's going to be good justification. Any more than that, it is very difficult to predict that far into the future. And less than that, I don't, I don't see a reason to do much less than that. Maybe six years. I think six is the lowest I would go. Thank you.
So what I, what I do remember, and thank you for touching on how things have changed, because it is true, and it's scary out there, how some things have changed, and I'm talking in the law enforcement world. I remember that the tax was supposed to try to keep the police department, whose budgets in prior years had done this ping-ponging, it was trying to keep them level, keep them whole, so that they knew they would have a steady budget. Whether that meant more or less, year after year, we would find out. And then everything else would go to roads, and I think we've done a really good job of that, of listening to the needs and assessing the needs, and putting the money where it goes, and using it as wisely as possible. I'm concerned with upcoming legislation because of past legislation. And I don't know an easy way or polite way to say this, so I'm just going to say it. I don't know how many of you know what goes on in some of the other cities around us, and I know that I didn't know as much as I do now, because I'm in them every day. But there was a young girl, who's 23-years-old, who was raped and then shot and left in the park in Cal City. There's been stabbings. There's been a whole lot that's been going on over there. I mean, the nickname's become Cal Compton. That's really, really offensive. And it's scary, because their police department wasn't as proactive as ours. And I am so incredibly grateful for the job that you do, and that we don't have gangs, and I want to make sure that you can always do that job. And I want our officers to feel safe and secure in the fact that they have a place to do that. And I don't want anything to affect that, because that's our safety and security. And it's scary. It's very scary in other cities. So, I'm grateful. And again, the legislation coming down the pike, none of us saw the jail closing, none of us saw Prop 47 passing. Prop 57 is even scarier, and if you haven't read it, please do. And the list can go on and on. So, I don't have a problem with the 1%. I am concerned with the county then putting a measure forth, and what we talked about. So, definitely, we're going to need some information, more information on that, because that's, everything I'm reading is not a very nice thing, because if we don't do it, looking like the county can, take it. So, I'd rather keep it here. I think that's all of my thoughts. I just, I'm not in agreement with the year, the 12 years, because I think it is a temporary as we work through some of the things that we need to work through as a city, and keep going and pushing on our economic development and our revenue side, with lawsuits and the various things that we're doing. So, and creating jobs in industry, not just suing people. So, that's kind of where I'm at.
Sir.
I'll keep mine's really short. Madam Mayor, my, and council, I think Mr. Cox brought a very valid point, that we need to do some investigation in reference to how the county and Rich Kresk can come up with that 1%, what we can and can't do. I think we should do some investigating on it and get what the legal standpoint on it is before we move further forward on it. I think there does need to be some particulars included in the resolution that would better protect us, so that the public does not interpret it one way or the other. And don't take it personally, Laura, I know you were just making a story to further define what your point, but when we say Cal Compton, that somewhat bothers me.
That's why I said it was very offensive to me, because it was, it was not an okay thing, not in relation to the city of Compton, or in Cal City. It's very offensive.
I know. Let me finish. Because, I mean, we put those stereotypes on, and I'm not saying it's just you, but it has a tendency to roll over, and we continue to think of the crime rate and people in Compton are, you know, really, really bad people. I mean, there's good places in all places, and there're bad places, and bad people in all places. So, and I, and I just, I just want us, as a community, to move beyond those, those things. And again, I'm not saying in reference to you, because I know the point you were trying to make. But let's kind of move forward with that. In reference to Councilman Sanders, I kind of support the six or the eight-year term because of how we serve in office. I think Madam Mayor may have mentioned of that as well. So, that's where I stand at it with it right now. I know when I first served on the Measure L Oversight Committee, we were told in our very first meeting, and Mrs. Karen can attest to it, by our other city manager, that, it was told to me, because I ended up being the president over it, that it was kind of a temporary solution to a quick fix, is what he kind of expressed to me, taking over. So, it seems that it has evolved into other things, and it has some merit to the fact that, you know, maybe Measure L shouldn't be looked at as a permanent thing, something that, you know, we should really strive hard to pursue, to get on our own two feet, and not to have, this is our main way of bringing resources into the community. And obviously, we'll have to dig harder and find other ways. But, I mean, that's what we are as a community. I think we strive best as a community, and we look deep, and we find things that challenge us, and we go after them, and we find a better solution. So, long story short, that's my, if it means anything, my recommendation.
Okay, I'm going to see if I can define something a little bit more fully here. If we decide that we are not going to approve it tonight, because we want to add that regulations in there, those time constraints, those kind of things, tell me the impact of that, and is it, does it put us behind the eight ball of getting it on the ballot measure?
Without special meetings, you won't make the ballot.
Okay. That answers my question there. Okay.
May I interrupt for a minute?
Please.
Keith has mentioned several times, we can't do ordinances at special meetings.
Oh, that's correct. I'm sorry.
Okay, so we know the answer. It's tonight.
Well, by special meeting, there's several different kinds of meetings. What are you referring to, the 72-hour notice meeting, or the?
No, the code itself specifies that the regular meetings of the city of council are the first and the third Wednesdays of the month. Any meeting apart from that's a special meeting.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so if we must do it tonight, in order to qualify on the ballot, and I believe it has to be done, I think I want to change the wording in it, so it clearly states, so everybody understands, and whatever, how you can change that to recognize that it is no double tax. It is simply here and here. One ends, the other begins. Can you put that into the ordinance that we would approve tonight?
I can put that in, yes.
Okay.
I would, that's what I'm going to ask.
If you, can you do that while we're talking, or do you want to just take a? Or do you wanna just take a few minutes?
I have a proposed sentence here that we can, we can start with, I think. I'm just gonna see where we should put it.
All right, let's, let's, let's take a 10-minute recess.
Could I ask one question real quick, Ms. Ford? Why wouldn't we be able to continue this for the next scheduled council meeting? Is it August 4th is the next one?
August 3rd is the next one. However, there are also legal requirements to allow for arguments for and against, and rebuttals for and against, and we're right on the deadline on that.
Oh, okay.
We have to allow seven to 14 days for arguments for and against, and then another 10 days for arguments, or rebuttals to those arguments. And everything still has to get to the county by August 12th.
Wow, okay.
Okay, let's, um, let's take a 10-minute recess. Please come back, don't leave. Thank you.
Please don't make it any longer than 10.
Okay. Just 'cause your time is a whole lot ahead of us.
Well, it's, it's 11 o'clock here. I drove six hours today, I got drive 12 tomorrow.
Okay. We're gonna, we're gonna make sure that you're okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. Because that's what I was gonna say. Oh, but things have changed. Well, but, but we do. We did, we did. The last... I wanna, I wanna see that, too, because I don't, I don't know. Because I wasn't, I don't know. I know, I believe you, I believe you. I just wanna see it. It's not that I don't believe you. Okay, I, I do tend to. Yeah, thank you, Ron. We had time. I thought we didn't. That's why I thought, when I asked it for the reference, they were gonna say no. Because, yeah, we could do it next time. Go ahead. So what do you think?
I think that, I think that's good.
Still there?
I'm here.
Okay. I'm going to ask council, I mean, I'm gonna ask staff if they will tell us what they're changing the wording to, please. Okay, on the ordinance... Uh-oh, I just lost my computer.
You just gave it an eagle eye, and it worked.
Savior comes. It's tired. Okay. On page one of the ordinance, under purpose, section 3.2.101, we added section, a new section C that reads, "When becoming operative, comma, this measure automatically repeals and replaces Measure L, comma, which was passed by the citizens of Richcrest in 2002." And then, then that renumbers section 12.
2012.
2012. It's late. I'm tired. It does say 12. And then that renumbers the, the next paragraph to paragraph D. And then on page two, the first line of the first paragraph reads, "Commencing on the operative date and continuing for a period of eight years," is what I'm assuming. Unless council changes.
That has to be changed several places, so...
Yeah. Okay. I can go through and change it. Any, any reference to 12 years could be changed to what the council decides, eight, six, whatever. And then on the resolution, the same change for number of years would be made on section 1, paragraph 2. And it's the...
Right.
Third line from the bottom.
I think that's the only place that needs to be changed in that resolution. Is that correct?
I believe so. I don't see any other, other references to the years.
Yeah, that's, that's the only one I saw in there, so...
Those are the proposed changes. Okay, so with those changes, for eight years, at 1%, that's gonna be...
Are you ready for a motion?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd make the first item. I'd make a motion to approve the resolution in order to submission to the qualified electorians of the city of Richcrest, a measure relating to the establishment of temporary transactions and use tax, sales tax, at the general election to be held on Tuesday, November 8, 2016, as called by resolution numbers 16-49 and 16-50, with those two changes that were made by the city clerk.
I'll second that.
Okay, for a roll call vote, Councilmember Maurer.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Breeden.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Acton.
Aye.
Mayor, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Sanders.
Aye.
All approve. Now we need two more motions.
And then I'd make the motion to waive reading in full of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Richcrest, amending the Richcrest Municipal Code by establishing a temporary transaction and use tax to be administered by the state board of equalization, and placing the measure on the election ballot for November 8, 2016.
Second.
Councilmember Maurer.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Breeden.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Acton.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sanders.
Aye.
All approve.
Okay, then I'd like to make a third motion to introduce by title only an ordinance of the city council of the city of Richcrest, amending the Richcrest Municipal Code by establishing a temporary transaction and use tax to be administered by the state board of equalization and placing the measure on the election ballot for November 8, 2016.
Second.
Councilmember Maurer.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Breeden.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Acton.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sanders.
Aye.
All approve. Okay. We are then at committee reports.
May I say something, Mayor, before you go on?
Please, sir.
Okay, since I had been out of town for the last three weeks, I had not attended any committee meetings. I plan on being home Friday night, but in order to do that, I need to drive a long ways tomorrow, so I would ask to be excused for the rest of the meeting.
I'm, I'm going to the Kerncock meeting for you tomorrow.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay. And what other meeting are you missing?
City Org.
Well, I will, I will be here. My next two meetings are infrastructure and City Org next week, and I will be here for both of those.
Okay, so that's the only one that you're missing.
Kerncock's the only one I'll be missing, yes.
Okay.
All right? Thank you, and good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, so, City Org?
Doesn't meet till next week.
Okay. Infrastructure, same?
Yep, next week, Thursday, at 5:00.
Ad hoc water meeting is not meeting right now. We're working with staff on getting some information. Parks and Rec?
We have not met.
We did, we meet, didn't we meet with him? Did you make the report last time?
Yeah, I made a report last time, so we haven't done anything since then, and then he made the council report, so...
Okay. Ad hoc youth advisory?
They're off for the summer.
Okay. Action Committee? They're off too, right?
Yes.
Because you only meet the third Tuesday of every month. And it's biannually.
Twice a year.
Yes. Okay, RECBB?
That's next month.
Next month. Okay, other committees and boards?
I, I do have BLM, and I'm trying to pull up the one thing that I want to make sure I read, because I don't wanna try to do that from memory. Okay. So, just to kinda give an overview of what's been happening in the BLM and upcoming, and I'll just remind everybody again that that is the fourth Thursday of the month. It is at 6:00 PM at the BLM. And the past few months have been actually pretty quiet. But this month, on the agenda, we are gonna talk about the Erskine Creek fire. We're gonna talk about the Wemo DRCP, because we still don't have a date on the DRCP, which means the Wemo can't be approved. There's some energy, new energy renewal projects coming forward. And the Mojave Trails National Monument Committee, under the DAC, which is the Desert Advisory Committee, will be meeting actually September 9th and 10th at the Richcrest BLM office. So it's always nice when they meet here, and we like to do tours and stuff, but information can go out. But what I really wanted to talk about is this. For those of you who don't have the data... Oh my goodness, I'm tired. Data, data, yeah. We learned that 7.1 million recreational visits have happened in 2016 so far to the BLM land in the state of California, and of that, 5.6 million or 79% are motorized. And I know you want to know how on earth we track that. Did you know that BLM actually has counters? I did not know that. I learned something new. But that's a lot coming through, and I know we talk about OHV and what it means to us here, and it's a lot. But what I really need to read is what came out of the Jawbone meeting, and I'll just read it in its entirety. The California State Parks Transformation Team's recommendations have been released, and within is this alarming statement about the state's highly successful OHV program. The current organization structure separates these important recreation services from the rest of the services provided by the department. Visitors would be better served by fully integrating these services into the rest of the department. What does that mean to Off-Highway Motor Vehicle Recreation Division of State Parks? Well, first, the division exclusively manages the extremely popular State Vehicular Recreation Areas, or the SVRA's. Second, it administers all-important grants and cooperative agreements program, which provide for well-managed off-highway vehicle recreation in the state of California by providing financial assistance to agencies and nonprofit entities. Think Jawbone, okay? This grants program supports the planning, acquisition, development, maintenance, administration, operation, enforcement, restoration, and conservation of trails, trailheads, areas, and other facilities associated with the use of off-highway motor vehicles and programs involving off-highway motor vehicle safety or education. So, without this grants program, OHV recreation in California would quickly become completely unstable. The Friends of Jawbone relies on those grants. They rely on the program to provide funding for all of the above, as well as, believe it or not, toilet maintenance and installation, trail improvement, signing, cap site maintenance, and on and on. The Kern County Desert Search and Rescue Team receives funding also from the OHV grants program each year, which allows them to deploy and help keep riders safe during busy weekends. But what makes it unique is that it's entirely user-funded. Green sticker, red sticker funds, the registration fees, the fuel taxes and entry fees charged at the SVRA's, that's what we're talking about. That's what's on the table here. The money that we pay for to use OHV is in jeopardy of going to not OHV, and we don't want that. So, the motor vehicle recreation division must be preserved, and we really want to keep it separate. So, if you could visit savecaliforniaohv.org today, tomorrow, sometime in the next week, please, you can message the decision-makers and make your voice heard. Secondly, July 19th in Sacramento, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM, there will be a public open house held. And I know I'm asking a lot, but riders, families, friends, pass the word on, please, for those who can attend, please do, because we need to make a showing in force. You cannot have our money. This is so important that the county of Kern sent a letter to the governor a couple of years ago when they tried to take our green sticker money, and told them that we would take our toys and go home and not support one of their programs. So we didn't. That program is the DRECP. This is hugely important, and it's important to us here for several reasons. But two of the top ones are funding, and we're talking about economic development, because those races and those riders bring a lot of money here. 5,000 per team. And I have the data to back up that claim, by the way. Number two, it provides the revenue sources that we're talking about, and it's our quality of life. You know, a lot of us use, when your tires go off pavement, you've just become off-highway. You are now OHV, and I don't care what you're on. If it's a hoof, if it's a bicycle, mountain bike, car, rock hounding, bird, whatever. So it's really, really important that we fight for our money, because it is our money that you pay into for your facilities. So that is my biggest announcement, and that's all I got for you.
I don't have anything. Have a good night.
Okay. Eddie? The committee, yeah, we're competitive committees. Groundwater Management Meeting tomorrow, Thursday, at 1:00 at the Water District. Kern Cock tomorrow evening in Bakersfield at 6:00. Air Pollution Control District and De Hach beyond the 28th at 5:00. Don't, I don't have any meetings to report on right now. Okay, so then, city managers' report.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is actually, I'm just going to read from a press release from when I was last week, just for the folks that may not have picked it up. But what it's about, it's our paving season, and as a part of our paving season, we'll be doing work in several different areas. But there are two of particular concern. One is Gateway Boulevard. That's the project we have from East Rich, Richcrest Boulevard to Church. That work isn't anticipated to start till August 1st, but it will involve the closure of the roadway during the construction times. So that, so people need to be aware that beginning August 1st, they may want to find another route other than Gateway Boulevard between East Richcrest and Church. And the same is true for the East Drummond Avenue, North China Lake Boulevard to Chelsea. That is actually, it was originally scheduled for July 25th, but that work will be, will be beginning. And again, it will be closed, that road will be closed during construction time. Then other projects, not that the roads will be closed, but that they will be under construction is the West Drummond widening project from Inyo Street to Downstreet. And then all the streets that are a part of our fiscal year 2016, street rehabilitation project, which the council just recently approved. And I won't read the limits, but the streets include, and that actually worked begins July 25th, and not on all these streets at the same time, but it'll sequentially then involve Silver Ridge. Oh, and these are all posted on the website, so that, that's the reason I'm not reading the limits. But it'll be Silver Ridge Street, Sanders Street, Sierra View, Sierra View, Sierra View, Vicki, Wayne Street, Chesapeake, Lakeland, Cardigan, Alice Avenue, and Mamie Avenue. And specific limits are posted on the website. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Okay, council comments. Mr. Sanders?
No, I don't have anything.
Lori?
Just, just two, I guess. Earlier this evening, we talked about the community and how it has contributed greatly to the Erskine Creek fire victims. As somebody who's up there, I was up there today, I was up there yesterday, I talked to a lot of the people, and I can tell you from them, they say thank you, because it's really nice to know that they're cared about outside of their community, and they appreciate all that we do. For those of you who may not know this, a lot of, a lot of people up there are retired, and with that comes a fixed income, and comes somebody who owns their home, and some of them couldn't afford fire insurance, so you can imagine what it's going to take for them to rebuild. So the long-term plan that we're enacting is hugely important and beneficial to them, and so I just wanted to pass that on. And the other is to my local law enforcement officers. I had every intention, was ready to go to the Blue Lives Matter, and I had a family emergency causing me to call an ambulance and transport my sister up here immediately, which is why I missed the event. But please know that I was with you in spirit, and it's very important to me, and I just wanted to let you know that personally, because it matters. And that's all I got. Have a good night.
Thank you. Eddie?
Yes, just to piggyback on what Councilwoman Atkins made mention of, of the Blue Lives, All Lives Matter event. I was hoping that from a public standpoint that we could captivate that event in reference to, I've had some people that did not want to participate in the picture-taking event, because they felt that it was one way or the other. And my challenge that I would like to make to the community is to also piggyback on Madam Mayor, that is, we would like to set up some type of form. Not everybody that lives in the community comes to the, to these events. But my problem is, is a lot of people that don't come to these events, city council events and other community events, constantly complain about what's not going on in the city. So I want, I would like to open up opportunity for those that feel that there's things that are going on or not going on in the city, that we could sit down and talk about the things that you want to go on in the city. So I'm hoping that we can figure out some kind of form, some kind of date, that we could have an opportunity for you that do not come here and do not feel that your voice is not heard, that we could sit down and talk about the things that are going on or not going on in the community. So I'm hoping that the community hears my heart, and I'm hoping that Madam Mayor would help me and piggyback on that, especially after her being so kind to throw it out there and challenge us as a community, as well as our captain that did the somewhat ice water challenge event in reference to posting the picture of how we support our police officers that do an outstanding job. And the other thing is I wanted to make mention of, and that is to thank Mr. Neal for asking us for the information. I did not know that it was 30,000 emails that you were working through. That's quite a bit, and I'm sure that takes, I'm not sure. I know that takes a lot, a lot of work and time. So I thank you, Dennis, with staff, that are having our staff work so hard to provide information out there to the public so that we can continue to be transparent. With that in mind, oh, and the last thing is, we also have the adopt a cop program that's going on. So if you want to adopt a, one of our outstanding police officers in prayer, please see Mrs. Tungit. Find her. She's easy to find. She's out in the community all over the place. So with that in mind, I'm done.
She's right there.
I didn't borrow Madam Mayor's glasses, so I didn't see you long ways, so that Mrs. Tungit is there. But I was also saying that in reference to those that are out there in TV land, that Mrs. Tungit is available, for those that want to adopt one of our police officers. And she's looking at expanding that to the prisons and to all kinds of stuff. So see her. She's got some good information for you. All right.
Okay. I just want to make one comment, and I will make it very, very brief. I think with the measure going on the ballot, we have a huge responsibility to understand, just as, I don't remember which one of you people referred it to, as, as a Band-Aid. It is a Band-Aid, and it doesn't fix anything, and we have a huge job, and we have to find a way to make things grow in this community, help people spend more dollars in this community, and help them understand the value of what they do. And I want us to begin work tomorrow on that. It's not like we haven't been doing it. I want to make it more focused, so we have things to say. We're doing this, this, and this, and this is what's the result of that, that, and that, and we do it together. So I thank you all. Motion to adjourn?
Submove.
I guess we're adjourned. Thank you. Yeah, roll call. Nobody's going to complain.